I don't want to get, I don't want to betray my own protocols here of not getting into a back and forth, but you can peruse the information. If you have follow-up questions, certainly, you know, we'll be open to answering them. Okay, now I've set this standard for myself of getting it on here. Yeah, there we go. Okay, great. And other than that, the, last week, we had quite a few people make comments. Mr. Evans, Ms. Facillo, Mr. Laurenti made comments in regards to universal preque. The board certainly received those comments, has been taking them into consideration, and Ms. Diaz, the same. We appreciate your support for in-house services. All these messages have been received, and we appreciate everybody voicing them. Okay, that brings us to committee reports. So I'll start off with facilities. Larry?
Okay, we had a meeting on, whenever it was, March 28th. Yeah, and we had presentations by a couple of turf companies, and Jason Seymour reported that he will be getting together a field trip with a number of people, including students, coaches, and to go to various fields to test out the infill and the manufacturer. We had a discussion on Harvey's transfer to capital budget projects, and what the committee, after discussion, came up with was the Phase One of the district-wide classroom corridor replacement at, for $600,000, and the district-wide security vestibule improvements for $360,525, which is added to the state money that was given to us a number of years ago that they finally released. Walter gave us a quick update on replacement of the high school cooling tower. He stated it should be operational by the last week in April. Granted, it's going to be in the eighties this week, so good luck. You know, let's see how that goes. Our next meeting is tomorrow night, and we have a possible meeting date of April 18th.
Great, thanks, Larry. Moving on to visitation. Margaret?
So, there's been a lot of work on this second report, that's the word I'm looking for, sorry, and we're, we're pretty close to being able to send it out to everybody. I got one okay for this one, and I'm looking to just see from Bass and John if they're good with it, and then we'll email it to everybody, and, and then we'll take next steps after that.
Great, sounds good. And audit, Jim?
No new meetings, but I'm going to reach out to Harvey because I'm sure internal audit is coming up here very soon. It's actually, it's typically in May, right? I mean, we're kind of right up against May into June, but you need to have enough data throughout the year to do an internal audit, so it comes in the spring. So, that will be coming up soon.
Great, thanks, Jim. And policy, Teresa?
Terry sent it out a few, sent, sent this out to us a few weeks ago regarding our last meeting, Wednesday, the 17th, Thursday, the 18th, Wednesday, May 24th or Wednesday, May 31st. So, I'm good with any of those nights, and you could just, you know, if that's good for everybody?
That's not Thursday, the 18th.
Okay, you got a, you got a heavy date, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Glad somebody does. Okay, and also, I just wanted to mention while we're talking about policy, I was reading the NISBA newsletter that came out, and for next year, and of course, everything comes around to budget again, I see that we changed it this year already. We updated the policy on homebound instruction, but they're changing it again as of next year. I know you know, I know you know that, you know that. But they're increasing it to 10 hours of elementary, a minimum, and 15 hours of secondary, and that's a week, and that's, first of all, that's a personnel, going to be a personnel issue, just having the people to do that, because they also widened a lot of the, a lot of the criteria depression, a lot of things they're seeing from our students after COVID that will be much looser as far as being allowed to be on homebound instruction. And it's, it applies to everyone from K through 21 years of age, even in private school. So, that's a fund, a funding issue that you might have to be looking at.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. And for communication, I'll be reaching out to everybody this week. I know I've been, I've been the bottleneck recently. I think my hair's been on fire for about three straight weeks, but I will, we'll get our next event scheduled ASAP. Okay, that brings us to, oh, sorry, that brings us to the scholarship committee, as I see Lewis in my peripheral vision. Yeah, go, go for it.
So, very exciting, as the end, as the year begins to come to a close, and children and the kids all select their colleges, they're seeking out scholarships, and as you guys know, we have the Board of Ed Scholarship out there. Its deadline is May 1st. Just a reminder and a poke to make sure you get your, your donation to Harvey, so we can, we can fund this and, you know, help somebody out. Thank you.
Thanks, Lewis. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull a particular item off the consent agenda? Richard?
Yeah, number seven, please.
Seven. Bass?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Six.
Six. Anybody else? All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools. So that is item, those are items two through five and eight through nine. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Brings us to item number six. That is the charitable fund 2023 resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Cornwall Central School District hereby creates a charitable fund in accordance with Education Law 1804.1 and 1709 12B as follows. Take the rest per document. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
And discussion.
Hey, thank you, Brendan. So, the, the question is, in the resolution, it says to receive unrestricted charitable monetary donations. We currently do that routinely, and I think we, in the consent agenda, there was a donation for $1,000 that we basically received. So, so the question becomes, why this, and how are those funds that are earmarked, quote unquote, charitable for this fund to be released? Thank you.
So, the donations that you typically see on the agendas, almost every meeting, which is good, they typically have a specific purpose where the donor or whatever is indicating where it should go. That's pretty simple. We just bump up the budget line respectively. With regards to the money for this fund, this is directly and specifically, as you know, for the solar farm. That money is unrestricted. They are giving it to the district as part of this arrangement for the district's discretion. Okay? How the district uses it, that would be based on another resolution to identify the specific use.
Thank you, Harvey. Appreciate it.
So, restricted versus unrestricted donations, I mean, that's, that's what it is.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Restricted versus unrestricted.
Sure. Restricted versus unrestricted is typically based on the donor.
Right.
If, if you gave a donation and said use it for whoever you want, it's unrestricted. But if you said, I want it to go to the Cornwall Elementary third grade class, that's restricted.
So, we never had an unrestricted donation kind of procedure before. This would be the first?
Right.
Okay. Who would decide how to dispense the money? I mean?
Board.
The board would decide. Okay, thank you.
Just, just, this, so this, this fund was created just due to the item number seven, the Mount Airy?
That's correct.
So, it's all related?
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carried. That brings us to item number seven, the Mount Airy Solar Pilot Resolution. Whereas New York State Real Property Tax Law Section 487 exempts from taxation the increase in value to real property by reasons of inclusion of certain energy systems, including solar energy systems, unless the county, city, town, village, or school district opts out. Take the rest per document. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Okay.
And discussion.
I think, I mean, maybe Harvey would be the best position here on the board to maybe explain it for the public. I mean, I'm not sure the public knows a lot about this project, and how the district is involved with it. Maybe like a brief explanation.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it first, and then Harvey can add any details if needed. So, there is a solar farm project that the Board, the Board of Education, the Cornwall Central School District have no say in whether it goes forward or not, but as part of the regulations established by the New York, New York State Government, there is a provision that to reach out to local school districts in which the projects are being undertaken, and there's an ability to provide funding to the school district as part of that arrangement, and that's what this entails. So again, the school district has no say, the planning boards and things of that nature of the actual jurisdictions have say on whether it's meeting code and all those things. All we are having a resolution on today is how to utilize the funds that would be provided to the school district through that arrangement.
Why would such project brings revenues to the school? I mean, this is kind of my question. It's like, that's the part that I believe should be explained to the public, and as they say, there is no free lunch. I mean, if we receive money, I mean, what are the expectations?
I could speak to that. So, first of all, keep in mind that this solar farm is going on real property. That real property right now is taxable in terms of school taxes. This location is New Windsor, pays New Windsor school taxes to us, our rate. The property will continue to pay taxes. It's the solar farm on top of the property that is exempt from adding to our tax base in terms of our access, accessibles. So, what happens is, we then approach this individual, this company, this corporation, and we, we basically get into a negotiating little bit to, basically, they will give us certain funds in lieu of taxes. Okay? Because they don't have to pay taxes, they typically have to do what's known as a pilot, payments in lieu of taxes. What we're doing here is a little creative, and it's actually very advantageous to the, to the district. So, a pilot agreement typically runs for a set number of years, say 15 years, and you get a certain amount each year, and it has a small escalation fee. What we're doing here is, we are reaching an agreement with the solar farm provider and telling them, we would instead like a large portion of our revenue, of, of the pilot, to be paid upfront. Okay? We'll take it upfront, and then the balance, you can pay over the 15 years. So that goes back to why we set up that charitable fund, because that large payment they're giving us needs to go somewhere. Okay? So, that's the mechanics of why we're getting this, because they're not paying taxes like everybody else does on their home.
And while we're at it, if I could just add some color to that, the reason why it's advantageous to get the payment in one lump sum is that if you spread it out over the course of 15 years, it wouldn't actually be very much money. It would be, you know, I don't, don't quote me, but $10,000, $15,000 a year. So it's not going to be game-changing money, but when you front load it, now you're talking about 200 and, what, $90,000, $87,000?
Right.
Now, this is money that in a lump sum, you can really do something with, which is why
Right.
this arrangement in particular is more advantageous.
The other, the other factor is, 15 years is, is quite a long time. You don't know what the future holds, and I'd rather take it upfront, and this company could go bankrupt. The entire industry could change, and next thing you know, hydrogen's a new thing, you know. So, we'll take it while we can.
Yeah, it was the best option. I agree. I mean, that, to take it upfront, I mean, considering other options. Any other, I mean, taxpayers in the area are getting their share, I mean, like us, or?
We have no other pilot agreements in, in the district right now.
See, kind of what I'm struggling to understand, I mean, still right now, is this solar company, and this is the CCSD, just these two? I mean, how about like all the surrounding properties of the location where they're going to build it?
That, that has no bearing on that.
Just on us?
Has no bearing on the tax, on the property owners around it.
And we don't designate those restrictions, or who it goes to?
Who other than Cornwall School District is getting kind of lump sum money?
All we know, we just aren't in those details. We just know our proportion of it.
I would assume others are getting their?
It would only be those that typically receive taxes. So it would be the town.
Well, theoretically, if, if, theoretically, let's say, as far as real estate taxes, you have five acres of land, and they're putting solar panels on it. Normally, when you improve property, you get more taxes to the school district, like with houses. In this case, they are improving the property. They're making a profit, and they would still be only paying us, maybe on 10 acres, $4,000 in taxes.
Yeah, which is nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah.
So, this is how, I think, the state set it up, so that it would be fair to the school district, because we're, we're losing that. It, it now becomes basically, we're, we're basically having a business that makes money, has property that has value to it, and we're not getting any benefit to that value.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you. That's clear. Who else? I mean, Harvey, I think you mentioned, like, who else is collecting, like, we are, taxes? The town of New Windsor?
Town in New Windsor would be the only other party.
They would have a huge share, I would say, I mean?
They would be the only other party, and I don't, I don't know what they have decided to do.
And their school district as well, right?
No.
No.
No. This is our school district. They're in our school district. Even though it's New Windsor, part of New Windsor is part of Cornwall School District.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just the town then?
Right.
Thank you.
Good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to our sole presentation tonight, which is the final budget presentation of the season. I'm going to pass it off to Harvey in a second. Just give you one structural note. Once Harvey goes through his presentation and gives us all the information I think that we need to, to make our decision, we're then going to move the, the conversation into another phase, which is, what does the board want to fund for next year out of its own, you know, discretion, let's say? I'm going to collect every, I'm going to go around and collect everybody's preferences and tabulate them on that fine whiteboard that has been rolled into the room. So, I just want you to know what's coming, so while you're absorbing this information, you know, you are going to have a chance to, you know, give those preferences. We're just going to do that at the end of Harvey's presentation. But Harvey, go.
Okay, so, can you hear me? No. Now you can hear me. All right. Sure. Like that? Okay. So tonight, tonight, as Brendan explained, we're going to be diving into the needs assessments, and basically trying to identify what we can fund in the current, in next year's budget. But before we do that, we really need to identify, what do we have to work with? So, as I've been doing each presentation, I've been updating you with regards to where we stand. So, on the last line there, on the April 10th for tonight, if you go across, the only change that you'll see is the preliminary expenditures. It's decreased by about $33,000. That was due to one of the annual reviews with regards to special needs student. So that freed up $33,000. So as you can see, on the far right, the funds available for district needs has increased by about $33,000, and it's almost 1.4 million. Couple other things to keep in mind now at the bottom. The property tax cap is now pegged at 1.78. Before, it was much higher, slightly higher, not much, and it was because we had a placeholder for those transfer to capital. Now that we've locked in where we are, it brings it down to 1.7 and change. Is that really important right now? No. And the reason I say that is because in the budget right now, we're reflecting a 1% increase. Okay? If the board decides to increase that, then we start tapping up against that. Yes?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt on slide one, but just to make sure that we're, preliminary expenditures, do you mean the rollover? Is that the rollover budget, those numbers?
Yes.
Or is that the proposed budget with new additions to it?
No.
That's the rollover budget?
That's the rollover.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's why we still, I'm showing there are the one, almost 1.4 million in excess funds. Okay? So, property tax cap, just an FYI, doesn't really play a factor right now. State aid, I think we've all been seeing this in the news, the governor and the legislature have not come to terms. They are currently on an extender. My concern is that right now, they're coming back in session, I believe, on the 17th. We have to approve the budget on the 20th. The latest we could approve it, if we so choose, is the 21st. It'd be a Friday night. I'm sure you all have better things to do. So hopefully the state comes to terms with themselves. So, with that said, as a recap, the total cost of the needs assessments that we've identified are about 2.8 million. In the box below, it really shows where we stand. We're talking about a surplus of about 1.4, as I just mentioned on the previous page. Okay, the 1373? That's what we started off with. Now, what we've also done is, District Administration has gone through this in detail, and they have identified the needs of the highest priority in the district. Does that mean that the board might not have a different opinion? Obviously, they could. But this is the, this is the, of, of our assessment of what is absolutely critical in the district, and that's going to be what you're going to see in blue. Okay? So, when you take what's available and back out what we've identified to date, we have about $108,000 left. That's unspoken for, as I'll say. If the board was to say, we don't need to do anything more, just as, as an option, that 108, we could bring down the tax levy a little more. Okay? So, the, if we go back, and this is similar to what you saw previously at the very first meeting of the presentation, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to Terry and Megan, and they're going to take you through this.
All right. So, in the first box on your left, you'll see a combination of what we identified on February 27th, which, which was kind of a comprehensive look at, sneak peek into the governor's proposed budget, which had a set aside for impact tutoring and things of that nature. So we talked to the board about, if that goes through, we have a plan for that. If that, if that gets taken off the table, we have another plan for that. So, in the first box, it was two CES teachers for third and fourth grade, one for COH and one for Willow. In the second box, really gets to our prioritized need based on our cabinet level kind of review, and that's just based on best practice, that the earlier you intervene with students, the better the possibility of, of high-impact access to their education. So, while we didn't include the whole package, because we only have limited funds available, we did still key in on the intervention teachers. But I want Megan to walk through what that rationale was, just so that we're being, keeping top of mind our model from this year, and what it looks like, could look like next year.
Okay, so, we currently have on the elementary level, our early intervention teachers, they hit our K2 world really hard. So, we have at CES, we have one full-time K1 early intervention teacher. At Willow and COH, one is shared, and then this model allows us to put in another full-time K2 teacher who will be able to intervene on the earliest level, providing those supports for our students. And in adding one at COH and one at Willow, that teacher no longer has to split their time between the two buildings. It allows them to have that impact as well at those schools. In regards to the full-time elementary teacher, this allows us to address our expanding class sizes. So, on the elementary level specifically, we are growing, and we continue to grow. Here at CES, this is our largest school, and the overflow of students end up coming here once we're filled at COH and at Willow Avenue. And so, in doing this, we can really start to balance our numbers in looking at our class setups within to also balance the dynamics that take place for each one of those classrooms. So, that would help support that need. Okay. I'll just keep going.
Jim, Jim has a question.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Just to make sure, the early intervention teachers would not be a quote-unquote "homeroom" teacher? They would float and push into other classrooms for students who need assistance? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, they're not a homeroom teacher at all. So this might be your AIS teacher.
Okay.
They pull kids out for support. They also push in for support. So it's kind of a dual combo.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, actually?
Sure.
So, the teachers that are listed in black, currently federally funded positions, so we're losing those essentially if we don't fund them again.
Right.
And then we, am I right to interpret that the early intervention teachers, we don't currently have, so we're kind of like swapping it out? Like, we're losing the, the ones in black, but then we would be gaining the ones in blue?
So, just as a reminder, this is the model minus that last full-time elementary teacher. This is the model that we currently have in place with the federal funds. So, this allowed us to provide that small group instruction within a classroom, within a classroom model. So you can have a teacher pushing in, they can take a group of kids off to the side, you could have people, children getting pulled out, and so on. When we had to look at the whole budget based on now what the actuals are, we would love to have everything that's listed there, but in our professional opinion, to hit the best needs at the lowest level, we would be looking to maintain that early intervention model for K2.
Got it. I, I understand now. I just wanted to be sure I was interpreting, like, what was italicized versus, if that meant
Right.
what was here versus what's not here, but
Yep.
they're, they're both here.
They're both here.
Got it. The only one is funded through federal. Got it.
So, could we, could we just clarify something, because I'm still not 100% sure on this? So, how many teachers do we currently have?
Federally funded?
No.
Okay.
I don't care. Money's fungible.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Whether it's coming from the taxpayer, or the taxpayer from Uncle Sam, it, it, to me, it's, it's not worth to discuss, right? What's worth to discuss, I think, is the number of teachers that we had pre-COVID, and the number of teachers we have now that we're out of COVID. And if you tell me we have the same number of teachers now that we did pre-COVID, and now we're looking to add, I think that's a great thing. But if you tell me that we have less teachers now than we did, and this is through, for, for, for K through four, right? Exclusively. If we have less teachers now than we had pre-COVID, and we're still going to have less teachers, I don't understand how early intervention teachers are going to help with the learning loss that we've experienced, which is quite high.
So?
So, so can we round up the numbers? So, we're talking, not what we're just adding, but we have these many total, and this is what it's going to look like when we get done with it?
And I sent this to the board, as you know, John, the exact numbers of how many classroom teachers we had dating back to, I think I went back to 18, 16, so I went way back.
I went back to 16, actually, to show. I went back to 16, actually, to show, but, but.
But I, I sent, so I sent an email to the board with dating back to 2016, how many teachers we had. The further explanation that's really important for everyone to understand is the number of elementary students that we've had since 2016 has remained very consistent. Approximately 1,000 students at all of our elementary ages. The discrepancy comes with, at each grade level, there's not a consistent number of students in each grade level. At some times, you may have a pop at, at first grade, like we're experiencing now, Mr. Haman. And last year, it was second grade. The, the numbers fluctuate depending on the year. The reason I really denoted the year 2018 in my data to the board is that when we add a teacher to start to figure out where that, how to deal with that bubble, that pop, sometimes it could have an impact that you just can't sustain as a district. So in 2018, at Willow, there were some classes with just 16 students. And then we would love that, that, I mean, who wouldn't want 16 students in their class, but it just isn't sustainable in a budget. So what we really do is look at class sizes at each grade level, approximately 23 at the K through two level, Megan, and then at the upper grade levels, it goes up a little bit, and allocate teachers across the district that way. Where we see pops in enrollment, like we've experienced this year, then we start to pay attention to, okay, we need to address this, which is why you see that elementary teacher there at the end. To answer John's question, we, we haven't had this many elementary teachers in recent history. So we have our traditional, approximately 41 classroom teachers. This is not inclusive of special education teachers. They are two per grade level at Willow and COH, so that's 10 plus 10, that gives you your 20. At CES, there's 23, Robert. So 43 plus eight federally funded teachers who are really pushing into those classrooms. So that's 51 for the district, far exceeds what we had pre-pandemic. So with the addition of this elementary teachers, not including the federal fund teachers, we get to very close to pre-pandemic numbers, adding the four that our cabinet has recommended to help support learning loss, gaps, anything that might come up from our students, because we've already committed to that this year. This isn't a new model. We're continuing the model to address those gaps that we already did this year. Those four additional would take us in excess of what we saw in 2016, 2018, and the like. So we feel really, really good about the supports that we're providing at the elementary level that will go far above where we had pre-pandemic.
So Terry, thank you for that. Quick question in terms of, of, you said the cabinet looked at it. So that would include you three? Or does that, how far down does that cabinet review and buy-in go?
So on the, just as a quick reminder, I know February 27th seems like ages ago, but it was only a short while ago. We presented to the board needs assessment that came right from principals and directors who had had those conversations with their staff. Amongst those conversations, they had already identified these intervention teachers as one of the needs that they wanted to be put on the board, and that's what was already included. What the cabinet level did is 1.3 goes very, very quickly when you're talking positions. So rather than utilize all of those fundings just at the elementary level, we really wanted to pay attention to the middle school level, the high school level, special education, other things that you're going to see as, see as we go along in the presentation, because those funds run out quickly. So the buy-in came back far before February 27th. Those principals and directors had already identified at the elementary level the need to keep as many of those federally funded teachers as possible to support students through learning gaps, through any deficits that they might encounter through the year. So the buy-in is, is solid.
So, so that, that buy-in was based on, on the needs assessment, not the prioritization of the needs? Is that what I understand with your answer?
Uh, no.
Okay, good.
So their, their principals and directors are responsible for prioritizing the needs that are brought before them. So that's what you saw on February 27th. We elevated higher pri, highest priority that we felt, given the constraints of a budget. We'd love to be Santa Claus and just say, "Everyone gets a teacher," but there's limited funds. So this was our prioritized list.
So, so, so I don't mean to go in circles on this, just want to be just 100% clear that when we looked at the numbers and said there's 1.3 available, cuts needed to be made, and those discussions happened beyond the cabinet level with building principals and others?
Uh, no. So.
That's, okay. That's.
Can I, can I just interject here? We have a lot of decisions to make as a board as to what we're going to fund. I think there's two, two conversations that we can have here. We can have like an oversight question of how all of this was put together, which is not invalid, but we, I, I don't want that to derail from the first goal of tonight, which is to receive the information we need to make funding decisions.
I, that I understand, but I just want to understand the needs assessment and then superimpose that, the prioritization in the process. Okay? And, and if you're saying that that's not important to the ultimate decision.
I'm saying that we need, I think.
And I know it's going to take some time.
I think we need to get through, we have a lot to get through, a lot of details. I just don't want attention to get diverted away from what is the primary goal of tonight. That, we have a, we have an issue that is very timely, that we need, questions that we need to answer tonight. And perhaps you would make an argument that answering these questions is just as timely. I personally, I don't see that connection yet.
I, I think it is timely, because at the end of the day, there's about $400,000 worth of teaching resources that are no longer in the budget. And I know that for third and fourth graders, that probably are going to matriculate to the middle school, which is another issue to talk about, but, but their learning loss needs to be addressed. And if we're basically going to move off this without talking about the learning loss and how those kids, whether they be in second grade, moving into third grade, or third grade, moving into fourth grade, however, they're going to be benefited with high-impact tutoring, which is what I understand Megan's plan is to do. If it's only going to be focused on the K through two, I think we're putting a huge disservice to a certain proportion of our, of our children. And that is why I'm trying to understand the buy-in, which is crucial for me to support. If from teachers in that classroom, all the way up to Terry, are behind this, hey, I feel good about that. If, if they're not, I don't know if I feel so good about it. And that's what I think this discussion's going to lead to.
Understood.
Getting comfortable. So thank you.
So we are going to get to a point, John, I am still talking to you. I don't know if you. Yeah, okay. So I think that when we get to the end of the, the discussion and we're comparing all of these needs, I think that'll be a point where perhaps we can ask, what was the thought process on including this versus that? We haven't absorbed all the information yet. This is going to come down to choices. So it's all going to, we need to know what our choices are first before we start weighting them. And that's what I want to get to. Get through the choices first, and then we can move the discussion into weighting them.
I, I can, I can appreciate that. I think the seal is already broken on this. I know we like to not ask questions during the presentation, but wait till someone's done. But the seal is broken, so I just jumped. I'm sorry.
All right. So just as a.
Let's, yeah.
Just as a reminder, both Megan and I both said separately that we know that best practice dictates that the earlier, find me the research that says the earlier you don't intervene with a kiddo, it's not going to reap significant benefits, full stop. I don't need to do a focus group. That is best practice for decades, full stop. So if we could go to the next.
Terry, sorry, not to derail again, but I just want to clarify, I think I heard you say something, and I want to just confirm that I heard it right. So you said when you got this list, which included everything in black and blue, that it was in a ranked priority order from the building administrator when you received it? I believe you just said that, but I want to confirm. No. I misheard you. Okay. Never mind.
Can I just add one thing?
And also, just as a reminder, these are add-ons. We're not ignoring our third and fourth grade students by not doing that. We have a robust AIS program currently in place where students have always been identified throughout the RTI and data team process. So if they need supports, they're getting them extensively through the AIS process. And if they're not finding success in that over a period of time, it's very, it's a very set procedure. They come back, interventions are put in place, and if it's still not working, then perhaps they would be recommended to a CSC. So I don't want this to seem as though because that wouldn't be up there, we would love it, but we can't do everything. That doesn't mean that our third and fourth grade students are now just being put by the wayside. And there's also a robust tutoring program specific for third and fourth on the elementary that has always been in play as well. Just as a side note.
Just one question, and it should be quick. I think you might have answered it. Is there some kind of target or state recommendation as to elementary school class, or class sizes? I know you said 23 was like the target, if I'm understanding that correctly?
So it's our target. I mean, best practice will say on the K1 world, you really should try to live within 19 to 21. Above that, 23 to even 24, 25, we've had on the fourth grade level. Is 25 great? Absolutely not. Right now, our first, we have classes of 25 in first grade, and that is why we're adding that other teacher in there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So moving on, keeping in the elementary world, we discussed the benefit of having a counselor available for our elementary students coming out of the pandemic and, and supporting our SEL needs at all levels. Due to the enrollment at CES, we have our counselor housed here, but she's also available to provide support for students at Willow and, and COH. So we continue to advocate for a counselor at the elementary level. In addition, a special education teacher, a question was asked in another meeting of, mandated. This would fall into that mandated category. As you increase in size and in certain special education classes, you have to ask for waivers from the state in order to provide short-term gaps for needs. But looking at what is to come next year in the district, we feel strongly that we need this special education teacher at the elementary level. Moving on to the middle school, we really wanted to support continuation of expansion of their counseling program. As a reminder, the addition of this counselor would allow for there to be a designated counselor at each grade level. We know that there's, there's a need. If you ever visit the middle school, these are folks that you will never see sitting down anywhere. They are always rocking and rolling, supporting, supporting our students. So that got elevated to the highest priority for the middle school. Not saying the other items aren't important, but again, just trying to look at the overall picture and needs of the district, we elevated the middle school counselor as a high priority for next year.
And just to expand on that, and the same at the elementary level. So on the elementary level, our social workers, there's one in each of the three buildings. Here at CES, there's only one social worker for over 500 children. So implementing a counselor that would be elementary for that position allows more work to be done for those social, emotional needs that haven't really been able to be tapped into as much as they have been at the other two elementary schools. Additionally, that person works within all three elementary to support needs in looking at attendance data, overall family supports and so on. The full-time school counselor at the middle school also supports that similar process where you have a dedicated person now per grade who can really get to know each of the kids as they go throughout to support both them and their families.
At the high school level, prioritized the addition of a special education teacher to increase and provide support in our co-teach offerings. This has been an ongoing conversation this year, and we've made sure that we included that in, in next year's budget. So that co-teach at that region's level course, in addition to any other needs that we see coming up to a need at the high school level next year. Additionally, we spoke this year about our current need of a full-time additional ENL teacher. This is based on straight numbers. We are seeing an influx of students in the district. It's having an increase in our group size. Our, our ENL teachers are working their behinds off to address all the needs, but we really need this position right now. And we talked about that for this year, but we've placed it in, in next year's budget as well.
And just to piggyback on that, so our population is increasing. We currently have over 100 students that need this support within our district. Just as a point of information, so when children register into the district, their family fills out a home question, a home question, a language question information. So essentially, it's, can, you know, can you speak the language? Is there another language spoken at home and so on? That triggers, it's called a NICE-TEL assessment of students to see their proficiency in the language. Based on that, students can be deemed appropriate to receive ENL services. They could be anywhere from emerging to commanding, depending on where they fall within the range. And that can mandate anywhere from 90 minutes to upwards in the high school to 540 minutes a week of instruction. So since we initially did the needs assessment back in February, we already had two additional students register here at CES for supports. And so this need, as we shared then, is continuing to grow and will continue to grow. We currently only have four ENL teachers in the district.
Moving on to athletics, the addition of an assistant track and field coach, definitely our largest team in the district. It's not a significant cost, but with such a large team and so many, they're spread out literally all over from the field events to the throwers to, to long distance, short distance, I mean, they're, they're everywhere. So we really wanted to support the athletic department's request for an assistant track and field coach, so that got elevated in blue. Again, everything that you're seeing in black was on the needs assessment, either from our principals and directors. And then Harvey will go through some of the board's recommendations and the costing, but you'll see communications that we presented on the 27th, the cost for UPK if we were to add an additional 20 seats. And then I'll turn it over to Harvey, who costed out some of the board requests.
So these are the requests that we received through the board. The very first one there is a new slash updated sound system for the high school auditorium. What we did was, we actually had a, a sound consultant come in and give us a quote, but not only did they give us a quote, but they had to first identify what the problems were. And it really boils down to a couple of things here. First of all, the entire quote was about $250,000, which kind of knocked us out of our chairs at that amount. But when we looked at what he includes, we can't prioritize these things. And the three most highest needs are the following. We have inadequate loudspeakers, basically speakers. The mixers with regards to the sound need to be replaced. And the wireless mic system as well needs to be replaced. So those three things are the highest priority because of the impact they have as well. The remaining items would not dramatically affect these three things. Okay? So it, this is what was, was pulled out. So that's about 150, almost 152,000 dollars. The next item here is an electronic marquee for the high school. Essentially, this is exactly similar to what we have at the middle school. Where would this go? This would come as you're coming up Dragon Drive, and you can go either left to the parking lot or right to go to the front of the school. It would be right there on that little peninsula sticking out. The reason that this is a little bit more money than what we paid for the middle school is because we don't have electricity out there. is because we don't have electricity out there. Okay? At the high, at the middle school, it already had electricity, so it wasn't a problem. Next, we have the request for an additional extracurricular bus for the middle school. That comes to almost $18,000. It's important to note that we currently run four late buses and one late van to accommodate our after-school activities. What I can tell you is that we are not experiencing any problems with capacity with that four and one. So I'm not fully sure where this came from, but, you know, I can certainly address any questions that may come up after. And lastly, we have the addition of calculus BC math course. That's $114,000, and I'll turn it over to Megan to talk about why that cost.
So it's important to note here, too, when we have budget requests, courses in the course catalog are not what the board approves. What is actually, I guess, being asked here is for another math teacher. I appreciate the student advocacy a million percent and support that. But typically, the process involves early conversations, typically the first quarter of the school year between guidance, the principal, the department chair, and so on, because there is a lot of planning that goes on around that. Some of the behind the scenes in regards to that with conversations with our department, our director of guidance and our principal at the high school is, it's not, it's not that it can't be done, it's just you have to audit what's currently in place unless you're willing to put in another teacher. Meaning, it's not as simple as saying, well, so-and-so can pick up this course. Something else has to go in order to that, in order for that to happen. So we would have to look at what's currently running, what is being asked for, what student need is going to be, and so on. Secondly, we also have another factor where we have a teacher who's retiring, another teacher is going to have to be trained and approved by the college board to teach that course. This would have to be a trained and approved course by the college board. We can do all of that. But more importantly, although there's a large number of students that wrote on that petition that night, many of them may not qualify or end up actually wanting to enroll in the course once it happens. So it involves teacher recommendation. It's a, it's an extremely intense course, whereas AB is one semester, it's the, it's the first semester covered over the full course year. BC is both parts of it for the full course year. Additionally, we would need to now run two sections of AB because kids who go into BC, who might get the recommendation, who would be approved, they may start it and feel that they can't continue with it, and they would need to go back into AB. And the current AB projected for next school year would be full. So again, it's not really board that approves actual courses that are being run in the course catalog, but if we're talking about this because it was brought here, it would really deal with hiring another math teacher. Our department, our director of guidance in the high school, they are trying to work magic to see if it is at all possible. But typically, like I said, this is something that would happen way in the beginning of the year. It wasn't even a conversation that was brought to them prior to that board meeting. So I guess at the end, if, if it could happen, they will definitely make it happen, but the only way that it really could happen based on this would be to put in another teacher.
So Brendan, that concludes the outline and the presentation.
So I know we probably have some questions. I think we should go around, get some board questions first before we're, I think we're comfortable with making, you know, our, our preferences. I think some of the questions might just be understanding what the combinations would be. So Bass, you can, you can kick us off if you have questions, and we'll just kind of go around.
Yeah, I have four questions.
Okay.
So, yeah, these are for anybody. I mean, I know my previous question, I said like, Harvey, you help me with that answer. I have to talk to the microphone. What are the criteria to go for, to rank highest priority versus no priority or regular, I call them regular priority for our needs? So what was the criteria behind the blue ink?
So a few things. These weren't, principals and directors didn't just submit something electronically. We bring them in for an, an in-depth conversation about the needs of their school, their departments, things of that nature. As we listen to those conversations, we can start to get a sense for what they're really advocating for. They all have tells that, you know, kind of allows us to kind of delve deeper. Some, we ask point blank, if you had a choice for impact between one or another, you know, which one would it be? And then we just have our experience over the course of numerous years looking at, remember on February 27th, we also talked about what has been approved in previous years. So please do not make the mistake of looking at this in isolation. Back on that February 27th meeting, we took a look back at what we funded in those previous years. So we also look at that. If we've already funded this three years ago, how do we shift funding to another priority area?
Okay, thanks. So this is a segue to my second question. I noticed, I mean, the black ink is not highest priority. However, in the black ink, there were some federally funded lines, and I did the math, So around $530,000 was previously funded. It's all in black. It's not highest priority anymore?
That's correct.
Why it was, I mean, when you, it was federally funded without being highest priority?
So that's a really tricky question and something that districts across the nation aren't going to, are going to deal with differently. So the, the trap that a lot of districts are falling into is how do you sustain your level of programming for your students irrespective of federal funds that are going to disappear? So a lot of districts are falling into a trap of depending on these federal funds for something that is all of a sudden becoming absolutely critical, and they're scrambling to figure out how to find those funds. We were very smart in, in figuring out our federal funds to address specific needs. Remember, these funds were to deal with pandemic. We are moving out of pandemic. It's not to say that there's not continued needs, but the funds were to use, be used to address pandemic needs in, in our, our districts. So I say all that, that there's funds for positions all across the state of New York. Every district will say that they provided a huge benefit to students, but it's also not sustainable. That's why everyone's going back to their typical budgeting process. So yes, those positions were really, really important. And two, we have 1.3 and some change to figure out how to address the needs across the district. So we kept some as a high priority and not others. The other thing I just want to stress is this is not my budget. This is not Megan's budget. This is not Harvey's budget. It's us using our, our best educational knowledge of having a good sense of what's going on across the district and providing the board with input from our perspective of what are the highest priority needs. If you want to add four more teachers and give up four other things, have, have at it. We said, out of all of the needs at the elementary level, if you target K2, that's where you're going to have your most significant benefit and impact for the future of our, our students.
Okay. Thank you. And third question, the math, I mean, the total needs is 2,800,000, roughly half our highest priority, right? I mean, regular needs versus hyper priority, 50% roughly each. What are, what are you envisioning of approving here? I mean, you know, like the whole thing, highest priority versus regular needs?
So if we look at, yeah.
All of them?
If you look at the slide behind you, the total cost of all the needs, blue and black, all in, this goes back to February 27th of what the board was already brought to your attention, plus the board recommendations that came in, we priced those out. That's where you get the 2.8. The budget surplus identified by Harvey is 1.3 and some change. The blue is what our team came up with as the highest priority needs identified by district administration. So that's 1.265. But we would be looking, unless the board wanted to do something different with our, our funds, would be to hit that 1.373 number.
Yeah, what's not on this slide is this separate, this is the regular needs, 1.5.
Those are the ones in black that you all would have to.
Yeah, 1.5, it's not there, but it's in the 2.8. I mean, if you just do the blue.
Yeah.
Plus one. Okay, so you're envisioning having this 2.8 altogether funded, right?
No.
No?
1.373348. So we've identified 1.265, that's in the blue. The sheet right here is the remaining 1.5.
Yeah.
That gets you to the 2.8. We don't have 2.8 in our budget to spend. So figuring out whether you accept our, our recommendations, there's still 108K to add something to the recommendations, and that gets us to the 1.373. Most of that, but the board can bring other things in and take other things out.
Okay. Just to wrap it up, I have one little ask, I think $1,500 for choking devices. I think we talked in my email to include it as a requirement. It did not show up on the last page.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, but it's not on.
Yeah. Terry, if you can just kind of recite your.
Yeah, I sent an email just to the board just to let you know why it didn't make the list. It's just not approved. So our own physician, our own nurses, our EMS doesn't use it, no one uses it. So we didn't fill the, with that email, I was trying to explain the research that we did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not read it.
Okay.
My mistake. But again, it is known that it's not approved. It's kind of like, not conventional device, but it's, it's proving.
Yeah, but our nurses, our nurses and our doctor and our EMS just are not recommending it. It would be hard for me to support something that's not, that's broadly not recommended.
Yeah, it's like thinking outside the box kind of thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Bass. So John.
Okay, onto me. Let me see if I track it now. So Terry, you mentioned the early intervention, and that's a pre-pandemic strategy, right, that we're finally getting on board with?
So I'm just going to.
In terms of.
Chime in real quick on that.
Making sure we have, like, allocation of resources for that?
Yeah, but I just, I don't, our AIS teachers work too hard. I just wanted Megan to chime in there.
So we have always had a very, very good, and we actually added a couple of years ago to our elementary early intervention program for our AIS teachers. So to answer your question, John, we've had AIS on the elementary level forever. We have increased it based on the needs of our students. The population increases, what our data shows us. What this is doing is allowing us to focus in keeping them on. Hello? Keeping the model that we've created with federal funds for our youngest students to hit them hard at the earliest level. So this builds upon the structure that's already in place.
Right. So just to clarify, that new structure was put in last year.
Well, AIS has always been there. The new structure has been put in with the federal funds that you see there.
And, and the structure is this high impact where kids are able to come in and go out and then run off the system and not be in AIS indefinitely. Because that's my understanding of how it used to be. And that the change that was made, if I could finish the question, thanks, is that now the children are getting more oriented time for them such that they're only in AIS for a temporary period and not being covered for the whole year. They're able to address the deficiency that whatever they're experiencing and then roll off.
So I'm not sure where you're getting your information from, but I can tell you that AIS and what this model is are different. So AIS is based on the data team meetings, and it pulls kids out if, as needed, and it's a push-in model as needed. As I have shared in previous presentations, as soon as your course load is expended, the push-in model kind of goes away because you need to pull the kids out. That's AIS. This model allowed for kids to get classroom within a classroom model. So it's not necessarily just our AIS students. It could be our highest level students that are now working in a small group to expand their understanding and to push them further. In terms of keeping them in there forever, that, this is all based on data. So kids who are in AIS, they are, it's, it's, those teachers have a specific caseload of kids that they work with. They have to show the data points, they have to bring them back to RTI, and they are exited. It's, it's a fluid model. Some kids are in there for a long time. Some kids are exited out in a shorter period of time. But what your information is, is not really accurate. This model that was created is push-in only. These kids are not getting pulled out by those teachers.
So this only addresses the push-in?
This allows for, what this model is, is allows for teachers to push in and work with the teachers in the classroom to divide the classroom, divide small groups. What we can do now with this is we can create it so we have more intervention in terms of pulling out. You asked, is what that model currently is. What we would like to do with it is to do that, but also now pull kids out as needed.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So, so if I understand now, we have 43 classroom teachers, K through four. On the slide here, we're adding one to make it 44, and that teacher will be afloat based on the need.
That teacher will address based on.
Class.
Class sizes for next year, where the need is.
Right. And that, and so we're going from 46 pre-pandemic, and now we're improving that to, from 43 to, to 44. Okay, that, that's, I think it's a good start. I don't know if it fully addresses the, the real issue, which is the size of the, the classroom sizes that we have. I just don't understand how in the past, we had the same number of kids, this is pre-pandemic, more teachers for classrooms, and our classrooms now are busting because we have three less teachers. We're addressing that problem by adding one more teacher.
Yeah, that's a simplistic way to look at it. I also talked about the bubbles at different schools. So going back to that information I provided to the board, CES was still dealing with high class size. I wasn't here, so I'm not going, I don't know what the process was, but CES had large class sizes at the same time that the board at that time decided to add additional classroom teachers. What I also think happened is that the board realized probably with the superintendent's recommendation that you can't sustain class sizes of 16, 17. So I'm going to say it again on record that yes, we would love to see lower class size all across the district. It comes at a cost. So I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for it. I'm just saying I'm a practical person that looks at a budget and knows what the numbers would have to look like. So the 46 that John is mentioning over and over again resulted in class sizes at Willow of 16 and 17 at a grade level, and it's just, Megan was talking about 19, 20, that is super ideal. 16, 17 just should not happen, and I think it got addressed as that bubble went through Willow. Then we shifted teachers to address class sizes equally across the street schools so we won't just have one school with low classes while the other two schools are dealing with high class size. It's just not fair.
I'd agree with fairness. And, and if, if one school is forced to have 26 kids in a class and other schools only have 22, I think there's maybe a way to reallocate, right?
Ding ding ding.
So Terry, you're, you're saying 44 is the answer. I, you know, the budget's gone up every year, and the fact that, that we have, in terms of the budget, and this was not talked about over the last three years, that we are not budgeting three, three classroom teachers that we had. We somehow lost three classroom teachers in previous budgets. And as a board member, I, I feel a little bit shocked by that.
John, it's not a loss of three teachers. Remember Willow used to be three sections per grade. Now it's two. So those teachers were relocated within our system, many of which got moved to CES to make the class size for per section five sections per class.
So, so I understand that there's movement. I also know that I think some teachers went to the middle school.
One teacher went to the middle school for reading.
I, and I'm not focused really on, on Willow. I'm, I'm really focused.
But that's where the move is, like I'm answering your question.
The, the number, it's the number of, of kids in a class right now at CES is, it's busting at the seams. And, and I, I'm, I'm glad that we're making a. And I, I'm glad that we're making a conscious start to get it remedied, but I'm really a little bit taken back that we had 46 FTEs pre-pandemic for our elementary school kids. There was some flux because kids went to private school or didn't want to do, come into school, whatever. But now that we're emerging from the pandemic, we have three less teachers. Now it will be two, if we can get this budget approved, two less than we did pre-pandemic. And that, that has nothing to do with allocation. That has everything to do with reduction. And I don't think that's, that was well communicated in the past. That's my point.
But John, you voted for those budgets.
And I did, and I feel guilty that I did not ask enough questions.
Exactly.
Because if I had asked the questions, hopefully it would have been surfaced. I have to tell you, I don't know what that means, but if someone has less FTEs for teachers in a, in a school district and doesn't think that's a priority for a board or the community to know about, I, I don't know what that puts us, but it puts us in a very strange place. Because teachers are the primary resource to get the mission done.
And you're not gonna pit us against teachers? We've said time and time again that we're adding four, five elementary teachers in our highly prioritized list. Five teachers, John. You can't spin it any other way than we are providing a healthy investment in our elementary teachers, and you can't spin it any other way. If you look at the 42 or 43 plus the one that we're adding on that level, but you're not including those four at the top that are benefiting elementary aged students. So again, we're, we're higher than pre-pandemic. We'll always be able to look at this number in the years to come to say that we made an investment in our elementary.
I understand the investment we are now starting to make, Terry. I get it. I agree with it. I don't think it necessarily goes far enough, but I tell you what, I know, not regents, but assessments are just around the corner, and we will find out just how well the last thing worked. I know, I know we've been very reticent to say that we have learning loss in this district. The numbers show that we do, and I hope that this is a good start to address that learning loss.
So, and just a reminder, John, in every single packet, you get the enrollment packet. And I have to share, as I just said before, we are always fiscally responsible. I was the building principal of this school for six years, and every single year I had to have the conversation with some teachers to say, I need someone to move from one grade to the next grade because we're going from four sections to five sections. Eventually, enrollment decreased at Willow Avenue, and we were able to move teachers over here. It's a balance. That doesn't mean that, in that one grade, yes, there was small numbers. However, there's pockets of small numbers throughout. We balance the numbers. We've come to the board and we have said at COH, they are high. This is a couple of years ago. They're high in first grade. We need a TA for that. The board supported it. These are not surprises. So I'm, I guess I'm just a little confused because we're asking right here for additional teachers to continue because we look and live in the buildings at the numbers of the students that continue to come in, especially at the K2 level, hence why we're asking for three teachers on the K2 level. So it's not like a wool over your eyes. I'm, I'm a little confused. You get the enrollment packet, you voted on it, you were in the conversations.
Can I interject? I know, John, you're not gonna want me to. You had something to say. I just wanna.
I do.
I wanna pass it back to you in a sec. I just wanna, I wanna be sure that just collectively, all of us, like, we're, we're leading towards decisions that we have to make. I know that we have, it comes down to what are our priorities? And, you know, if this is leading towards a suggestion of funding one thing that's in black that would force something to come off of blue, then I think that's generally where we need to go. I just don't want this to get derailed too much into side discussions.
Look, I, I think everyone knows my position when it comes to the budget, right? And it's addressing learning loss for our kids, because if we can't get this right at an early moment in time, we're never gonna get it right. And that's, and that's on us. And, and obviously, I'll, I'll bear the burden that I did not ask enough questions to realize that the number of teachers, FTEs, went from, for classrooms, went from 46 to 43. I'll bear that burden. But I'm gonna ask that others share it too. And if it's that important as an administrator, I would hope that those issues would be brought to the fore. I applaud the effort this year of bringing these issues up here. Maybe it wasn't done in the past because of lack of time or resources. I'm not sure. But the bottom line is, learning loss is real, and we need to have a plan in place to address it. But let me move on, in the interest of asking other questions. AP classes. I understand that this would be a new class, BC versus AB. How many kids do we normally have in calculus AB? We have, how many sections for that group of 25 kids? So, so we would have an AP class with 25 kids in it? Is that? Potentially? Have we had that in the past? For, for calculus, for, you know, macro US, you know, APUSH for calculus? Been close, okay. Thank you for that. Success program. How does this needs not being filled affect the success program?
So back on the 27th, we talked about, the success program is really successful. See what I did with there? At the middle school level, but this would be able to provide additional enrichment for the students. So this would allow access to elective courses in particular areas. So the success program would continue to function as, as it normally has for the past few years. This was just something, looking at the numbers, we fully support it. This is special education, yes. Mm-hmm. So it would be an enhancement to the program.
And, and so will the kids in that program eventually have these opportunities? It's just not at, at this age level at the middle school? Is that?
Kate.
So, their part, they, could you get out of their coursework when they go up to high school, CBI? But right now, we only offer them art, history, that as a.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. So, so last question. So I know, I know we have a number of, of things here in the, in the needs that are now black, black and blue. It's kind of ironic. When it comes to addressing the learning loss, and high-impact tutoring is one of the things that have come out from that, as the, the standard to follow, I guess, or the leading practice. Maybe not the standard, best practice. What in this budget has been allocated to address that?
So I'll have Megan talk a little bit more about what we want the model to look like at the elementary level moving forward. I can say amongst superintendents, high-impact tutoring was, I don't even know how to categorize it. We all kind of laughed at it, like, what designates high-impact tutoring versus every tutoring program that we put together, we expect to be high-impact. So that was hard for me to wrap my head around. And then both sides of the House at the New York State Legislature didn't support it. So this isn't deemed a best practice. It was deemed something that I believe someone grabbed onto. It became the buzzword, and let's focus on high-impact tutoring. But obviously, it's not garnered the support at any, at the district levels and at the state level.
Okay. And I understand that there was some pushback at the state level because they didn't want to have restricted fund usage. But, and I, I appreciate that, but I do believe Brown University is the one who came up with the notion of high-impact tutoring. I think they define it as tutoring at least three times a week for an hour. So I, I would defer to them and on how that's described, how we do it. I know Megan earlier said that we have a robust tutoring program. Maybe, maybe it wasn't active during the last couple of years, and that explains why math went so badly at the middle school. Two years, last year it rebounded, but it's still below pre-pandemic levels in terms of proficiency. So I think doing whatever we can and making sure we allocate dollars to address those needs that are prevailing is important. So as I understand it, we haven't allocated any additional tutoring to continue in this budget.
I'm gonna have Megan reiterate again.
Besides what we've done for the last decade.
So every year Harvey puts tutoring in the budget. So there's tutoring dollars already within the budget that rolls over. Harvey, can you just go back a slide? So what this will, another one, sorry. So what this will allow us to do is have flexibility within those four teachers that would be hired for the K2 world. We have our kids that are allocated for AIS. This additionally allows us to have the flexibility where if a kid is struggling and perhaps they don't qualify for AIS just yet, and they would have, need a tier-one intervention within the classroom or a pullout, they can get that, which may negate them needing AIS ultimately, or it may be the gateway for them to get AIS. So they would get that a couple of times a week, and essentially that is what you would call the high-impact tutoring within this model.
Okay, great. Thank you. Last question. I'm sorry for, for taking up all this time, but I appreciate everyone's indulgence on that. So this includes new needs or previously unaddressed needs, I guess is a better way to say that?
Yes.
When are we going to see the other part of the budget, which is the rollover of all the other things that we currently are continuing? Yes?
We just typically wait until we have things firmed up before we put that up. Recently, but if I did it at every juncture, if we would saw people.
If we did it at every juncture.
Yeah.
It would be changing.
Sure.
And people wouldn't, it would be difficult for them to understand. So we typically do that toward the end of the budget process.
So, so we're getting close, so.
We are.
So, next meeting or the meeting thereafter?
If, depending on what we decide tonight, if we, if, if things are firmed up tonight, theoretically, next meeting is really just the, the board to approve the budget. So we could have it up by then.
Ah, okay. So, so, all right, so, so it's something that I think we should talk about then. So, so how much in that budget rollover is in professional development? Because as I understand it, that has been paused, which means that we haven't allocated any money for it?
No, it's not true.
So, yeah, so help me.
But that's not gonna impact the conversation. We're talking about next year's budget.
Exactly. So, so what was the rollover? Is it?
We don't have that information. You can't ask for something of that magnitude at the DIAUS. It's not fair.
Yeah, I mean, generally my.
So, so can we just include it next time, that conversation, then? Because I, the last thing I want to do is say, okay, we agreed to all this stuff tonight, and so we're gonna have a resolution next time, and we're not gonna have any more discussion about the line items.
I have the answer for them.
Because I'd like to see the, the line items, and that's my only request. And that's why, when I heard, hey, we're just gonna do the resolution next time, it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa. I'd ask for a little bit more discussion as it pertains to those line items. Okay?
So it's about $35,000.
I'd still like to have the.
You can have it, but that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I'd still like to have that conversation next time, just to clarify. I don't want this just to be.
And you'll keep it focused on the budget, correct?
Yeah, for sure. I'm, I'm trying to here.
All right, thank you. So my first question, or maybe I'm the only one here that's still a little confused, and I'll, I guess I'll step on this grenade again about class size for the elementary schools. And I wasn't on the board, you know, last year or three years ago. Can you just go over again about how many teachers we had in 2016 and how many we're proposing for now? Because I still don't seem to understand that.
Yeah, if you could go into your next question, I'm gonna read exactly what I sent to the board. So if you could go to your next question.
Sure.
While I pull that up.
Okay. So, well, the math course, the, what is it? The BC AP, calculus BC. My understanding is we don't have a teacher right now that can fulfill that responsibility. We have to hire an additional teacher.
So just to go back to the very beginning of the entire budget process, Harvey asks for packets from every nook and cranny, every administrator. A math teacher was not included for the high school. Then we had a student come in and very nicely advocate for a course. That's not how the process is completed. We have highly qualified teachers that can certainly get trained in teaching calc BC, but it's a much larger picture than that. If we put calc BC in right now, we would need to possibly remove an AIS math class, algebra 2B, which are for students who need more time to complete courses for graduation. I am not gonna stand behind that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And just to clarify on, I think this is, it's in black ink here, about the universal pre-K? Yep, adding 20 more seats. So my, I guess my question, and I think you explained it last time, so right now we have 60 seats, right? This is for 22, 23. If the board, let's say, decided to, let's say we'll add, it'll go up to 80 seats, right? So you're not recommending it for, at this moment, right? So this is not included?
It's not, yeah, it's not in the.
It's not included? Okay.
But to be clear, it could, it could be included if the board.
Yeah, I think it should be. I think. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I think it should be. I think we have to do everything for all our students in Cornwall. So that's why I'm here. So I think it should be. That's my take on it.
And then I have the class size information.
Oh, thank you.
So every board meeting agenda has an enrollment comparison attached. I have attached the most recent enrollment reports, one from the 18, September 18, one from October 2016, to kind of illustrate the information that should be utilized for our existing class size and by way of comparison to pre-pandemic years. As you can see in the attached documents, sorry, public, you don't have those, our class size comparison is as follows. In 2023, overall elementary class size average was 23.3. That's our current school year. That's with a total number of general ed students of 1,000 with 43 classroom teachers. In 2018, the elementary class size averaged 22.3. Total number of gen ed students, 1,003 students with 45 classroom teachers. Do the quick math, you can see how it doesn't equate to an immediate drop just when you add a teacher because of the fluctuations in class size that I brought up. In 2016, overall elementary class size was 21.7 with 1,000 students with 46 classroom teachers. With the 22, 23 proposal to add one elementary teacher due to class size concerns, it would equate to an overall elementary class size of approximately 22.7, assuming we have 1,000 gen ed students with 44 classroom teachers. That puts us in between the 2018 and 2023 school years. As you can see in the attached documents, our overall number of gen ed students has remained constant over time. However, how those students are distributed across the district and in particular grade level is where you see fluctuations in class size. Of particular note is a very low class size at Willow in 2016 with some grade levels having 16 or 17 students per class. This is certainly a teacher's dream, but not anywhere near fiscally sustainable.
Thank you. So I'll move on to my next question, and it's about the middle school hall monitors, that proposal. And I know that was a, when we started, February 27th, it was discussed a little bit. So the proposal is hiring five, right? Five hall monitors. And my question would be, could we hire two? I mean, instead of five, if, I mean, two is better than, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the board could spice them up however they want it.
Okay. Yeah. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Great. So Margaret.
So thank you very much for all of the work and all the number crunching. I appreciate the fact that you guys are doing tons of research and taking the priorities from what you work for on a daily basis, that you're in the middle of this, up to your knees, up to your neck, probably. knees, up to your neck probably. So I really don't have a whole lot of questions. I mean, I wish we could deal with everything, and when I win the lottery, I'm sure to make that happen. But it, you know, it, we do have to make decisions, and unfortunately, some things are just not going to fly because, again, we are beholden to the taxpayers, right? We have to be fiscally responsible. My hope is, you know, that some of the things that we're not able to do in this budget that we remember, you know, for next year, and it goes back into the evaluation of where we are and how things work. So I don't have any questions other than, thank you for all the work that you guys have done on this.
All right. Jim?
I share Margaret's thought, when I win the lottery, I'll, I'll donate to the new unrestricted fund balance when I win the Powerball. So I guess I've got a, maybe a big picture question, and then I have just some sort of clarification. So maybe I'll start big and work small. When I look at the budget every year, I, you know, and I, and I know you do this, Harvey, and Terry, and Megan, and everybody who works on it, we really need to make sure it's not just about this year's budget, but it's about year after year after year after year. Is it fiscally sustainable for the district? And it's been more challenging than normal to do that the past couple of years with an influx in federal funds, and we knew those were short-term funds, inflation running rampant this year, transportation costs have increased to what, about 1% of the budget is right there in that increase, half a percent on that Bosie's bond, and we won't belabor what, how that process went down. But, so a lot of factors beyond our control. Thankfully, New York State has stepped up to honor, you know, commitments with the increased funding and the foundation aid that they had to get sued and lose to make up for 20 years' worth of funding. So, so it does look like, you know, that foundation aid is here to stay, the governor's on board with it, it seems both houses and legislature are on board with it. You pointed out, Harvey, we're not just on extension number one or extension number two for the budget, but it does appear that the, the school portion of that is pretty set, and they're, they're bargaining, shall we say, over other issues. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for really monitoring those waters and keeping us on what I think is sustainable, not just for this year, but for the future. But just going back, I just want to make sure we, we talk big picture about the budget. If you go back to your first slide, you talk about a budget surplus, and you have that in quotes. That represents, maybe the next slide, that represents with a 1% increase in the tax levy?
Correct.
What if we didn't increase the tax levy? Or what if we increased the tax levy up to the cap? What would that number be?
So the tax, 1% equals about 500,000.
Okay.
So you, you bump it up. Now, remember now, we can't go to two. We can only go like 1.75. So you can only bump it up about 400 max more.
Or it could be taken down 500.
You could take it down a half percent, but reducing 500,000. Yes.
Sorry. Half a percent is 500,000?
No, full percent is 500. I'm sorry. Half a percent, your example, would be 250. Yes.
Okay. But right now, this is based on?
1%.
1%. And if we just stayed, you know, we'll use our NCAA bracket terminology, if we stayed chalk here, if we stuck to this, don't spend on the black, spend the blue, there was 108,000 left over, so it would be point nine something. It would be just under 1%.
Right.
So just want to make sure that I understood we were on, on the big picture. And then just a few questions for clarification. And I'm going to go back to the elementary school teachers, but just bear with me. The AIS, what is the staff level there? And I guess just for my, so it seems like the new teachers that were rec, obviously one teacher is a full-time teacher, the other, what was it, two here, and one in Willow, and what, so four? That's sort of a model in between a homeroom teacher and AIS? It's sort of in between those two approaches, if I have that correctly?
Okay, so a classroom teacher and what we're looking for here are, it's two different things.
Right.
Right. So a classroom teacher would be like what we're looking for, for that full-time elementary.
Correct.
Yep.
But these teachers are different than AIS teachers, if I understood what.
They, yes, they can be.
What can you say to John?
Yes. So in the current model, what they do, so in the current model, they push in.
Right.
And they make a classroom within a classroom model.
Okay.
Within that actual classroom environment.
Okay.
We would still do that, but in addition, we would have the flexibility to pull out because we would restructure in the means that, like I had said before, like, we would have different, almost like more flexibility where if a kid is possibly not yet qualifying for AIS, but they're teetering, they're kind of like in that zone, we would capture them, give them some intense instruction, both as a push-in when the teacher goes into that specific classroom, but also as a pull-out model. If it doesn't work, because you're talking about two teachers for five classes, or one teacher for two classes, then they would go back to RTI and the data team meetings, and they might qualify for just regular AIS.
And to your point, Jim, as a principal, the, my expectation was, there's things that should be happening in the classroom before a kiddo gets to AIS. So what have you already tried in the classroom? Additional reading, an additional reading group, additional math skills, pull the kiddo at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the day? How do you spiral back to previously learned content because that kiddo didn't get quite understand fractions, decimals, percentages, but we've already moved forward? But you could pull a group of kiddos that didn't understand that in a small group. This teacher would be able to work with those.
Right.
Students to try to fill those gaps that are present before they get identified through the data for AIS.
Got it. Okay. Helpful. It's, yeah. Not being in the schools every day, and you guys are, some of our questions might be basic, but I think it's important that we have a full grasp of what we're voting. So what, and just to maybe put a bow on the staffing levels, what is the staffing level for the AIS? Because we've talked about the homeroom teacher, staff numbers over time, we're talking about, you know, these new early intervention teachers. What's the staffing level for the AIS program?
So currently here at CES, we have, let me think, we have four full-time AIS teachers and one early intervention. Thank you. That's with this, that's with the federal funds.
In addition to.
Okay, so we have four plus one early intervention. At COH and at Willow, it would be the two, plus they share an early intervention between them.
Okay.
So when, going back to the buy-in from principals, if Darren was sitting here, he said, please, if we could focus on early intervention and not have to share, then between the two buildings, this allows for that, that you're no longer having that travel time and things of that nature. You can have the early intervention right there at COH, at Willow, at CES. It allows for a lot more of that, that important work.
Right. Thank you. And then similar question on the staffing size for the school counselor, because we've got in here, I think at all three levels, recommendations for counselors to, and then, and then here, we've got the two, the blues in the two lower levels and the black for the, for the high school. What's the current staff size at each of those levels now? You know, I'm trying to get a feel, are we, are we going from two to three? Are we going from, you know, 18 to 19?
Yep. So on the elementary, we have three social workers, one in each building, and we have the one counselor that was added this past year that we'd like to keep. On the, excuse me, middle school level, we have four counselors, three counselors. This will give us one more. I'm touching my math on my fingers there. This will give us one more, so there's one per grade level. And on the high school level, there's one. This will give us two.
Not counselors.
Social workers, sorry.
Social workers, yeah.
Sorry, did I, did I say that wrong? Is it social worker on here?
I just said it wrong at the end.
Yeah, counselors at the high school level is four, correct, Jeff?
Let me find my page here.
So we would keep.
You're right. We have, did social worker not?
Mm-hmm.
You're right. Okay. Okay. And then, thank you for that. On the UPK, I just want to dig in that a little bit more, because I know last time you really gave a good explanation on the lottery and how that was conducted and how that went down. And you specifically said, you know, we can't do 100 because we wouldn't be meeting our promises to our providers. If everybody won the lottery, we still would have people turn it down because they didn't win the provider of their choice. And I think you said, and, well, maybe I'll ask it, I won't tell you what it, I won't tell you if my memory was right, but when it, so you said 100 was a non-starter. And at 80, you were potentially concerned that we wouldn't even get to 80. So I guess the question is, is not recommending this a budgetary reason, or is it because you don't think we can fill the 80 with the current lottery, and you are concerned that we'll only get 15 or 16 or 17 and won't meet our promises to an external provider?
So thank you for asking that. It's become a budgetary concern for me that when we talk, when we hear from our constituents and talk about mandates and things of that nature, UPK is not a mandate and critically important. So I, I, my team worked ad nauseam to make sure that we had a successful program, get started with 58 students, going to 60 next year guaranteed. The concern that I had with filling slots last year, 80 would have been actually a non-starter, just, we wouldn't have, we absolutely would not have filled it. The data that I saw last year with the non-acceptance rate is holding true. So I've had 12 out of the 60 offers rejected, so that's 20%, are turning it down to Jim's point. It's not because they don't value UPK, it's that they're wedded to Sportsplex or Butterhill or Windsor Academy or countless other providers. So that 20% is holding very, very consistent. So now I'm applying that 20% to, there's approximately 42 remaining on the waitlist. If we open up 20 slots, we're starting to crunch numbers. So think through two scenarios. That 20% is holding true when you have three high-quality providers for families to choose from. The remaining 42, if we were to open up another 20 seats, we would be selecting one provider to expand that 20 seats to. So you have to do the math, 20% are automatically going to say no, just based on the, the data that I've gathered thus far. So of that 42, eight to 10 would probably say no, so now you're down to 32. Do we believe that 32 would accept those 20 slots at whatever provider we open? That's where I'm just, I, I, I think we can get there, but I'm, I'm starting to get to being a little concerned.
It's not a slam dunk.
It's not a slam dunk.
Yeah.
And I've, as I expressed, until we have like a voucher system where here's your voucher, here's your voucher, families are going to struggle with, I want a free UPK provided by the state, but I also want a provider that's great for my child and my family.
But the state mandates the way that we run that process, right?
That's absolutely right.
We can't run it the way that we, that would work better for our district, because that would be too easy.
I asked, I asked, could we use the additional seats? So don't give me the additional seats. Can we use that to the delta, so the board doesn't even have to vote on UPK period? And it was a no. Here's this per pupil, you can only use it per pupil with a straight lottery, and it has to be with the providers that, that you've partnered with. But I, I still believe that I can, my team can do some work to get those 20 seats filled. I mean, we will do a RFP to make sure we have a high-quality provider, or we'll add to an existing provider. Some existing providers have expressed interest in expanding seats, so I, I think we can get there, because there's still probably some other families that may not have applied or waiting to hear.
Yeah.
If there'll be a extension.
Thank you. Next clarification, the sound system, Harvey. Would that be, fall under the capital bucket where we could get state reimbursement for that, or?
It could, but we'd have to wait, because it would probably take, we wouldn't see it probably for about a year and a half.
Sure.
But it could.
I'm just, I'm thinking down the road, it seems like something that would be good to.
Right.
Add to our capital needs list, and.
Right.
We know we've got a lot of them, but, you know, something to add to that list to, you know, if we can get it for an 80% discount, that's the way to do it.
Right.
If, if we're able to, yeah.
Yep.
And, and last, maybe clarification for you. I was the one who requested the middle school bus to Brendan, based upon, a member of the public made that comment. I didn't have the issue. I actually texted him because I had his phone number, because I coached his son in Little League, and he actually said he traded some emails with you. I guess the issue is not the number of buses, but it's the timing, and that for middle school sports, they miss the bus. And, you know, from this residence concern, the activity buses, he says are mostly empty. I don't know if that's true or not true, but the issue is so not necessarily the number of buses, but the timing. So if that's something that you can look at when we're making the schedule next year, obviously, I understand the timing of the buses is very difficult because they're doing three different schools, and it's three, and it's a big puzzle to put together. But I guess I'll just request, as you're looking at that process next year, if you could keep that in mind, and potentially, that would be something we could work in. That'd be fantastic.
So one of, one of the hurdles with regards to after-school buses for athletics is that every team ends practice at a different time. There's no, you know, whereas the extracurricular, the clubs and activities, it goes for, you know, 45, 44, 45 minutes, and they're done, they all come out and they take the bus home. Athletics creates a whole nother challenge. You know, you, you might almost have to have a separate bus for every team that's practicing.
Okay. Fair.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Teresa.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for putting, getting all our questions out there and, and reviewing them. You know, when nine people at a table get together and realize that they have to make these very important decisions, for anybody watching this, it's very stressful. It can get contentious, because you wouldn't want nine people sitting at a table that didn't find it stressful. That's as simple as that. We, we're making decisions for children and families. Having said that, as far as, just to touch base on your last, well, one of your last questions, UPK. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched it. So much nicer to watch it on TV, you know, you have your soda, your chips. And I'm really glad you explained to Mr. Laurenti, I, I, he spoke to me later, about the lottery, because that word is very insulting to some people, and I don't blame them, and it's not our word, it's from the state. You don't want to hear your kid is in some kind of lottery. Think about a book I read in middle school, you know, the stones and the rocks. So anyway, that's the first thing. The second thing is, which is worth repeating, I looked it up, the average cost of preschool in our county is about $12,000 a year, between 11 and 12,000, right around there. We get from the state 5,500?
It went up a little bit, 57, maybe, Harvey? Right?
It did go up a little bit. What you have to keep in mind is, the way that they've structured it now, it's a tiered system. So the original 63 seats get so much aid, the next 20 get so much, and now to get us up to 137 is a higher amount.
Well, of course, it's a state. If they can confuse you and, and dazzle you to the point that you make every parent angry, and they don't understand what the heck's going on, it's not any fun.
But as that, as that number indicates here, it costs us, just figure a round off, about $4,000 a student.
Okay.
Costs the district.
Okay. So basically, that's the delta, when you refer to a delta, that's the difference. So when people talk about, and I've had parents come to me, and they say, but it's, it's guaranteed, it's universal pre-K, and, you know, it's something that I don't think a lot of parents, and I know you've discussed this with some parents, because they did call me, and say, I understand it now, this is what you get, and you have to pay the difference. So I, I'm really glad you got that out there. And yes, personally, I would like to see if there was a way we could get some more seats for some of these parents, because, again, early intervention, whether, I mean, I heard it being mentioned tonight, and I think about special education. And my, my daughter was in early intervention from the time she was two and a half years old in, in a program. So it made a huge difference. And, and anything we do now is, is imperative. So if we can get some of these children any more seats, I would really like to see that. But I understand it's not that simple, and I don't want anybody to think I'm suggesting it is. It's just a thought that I think most of us here would agree with. It's just a thought that I think most of us here would agree with. Class, class size, teacher, teacher ratio and class size. I've run into this before, and many times, in fact, this is, well, maybe my last, but my 21st budget. And in, in the years I've, I've been involved, in Monroe Woodbury, we had a huge bubble. Where about, I think it was 3,800 children came in in a two-year period. It was like another school district came into a school district. You remember? And anyway, one of the things that had helped us along, and I know Harvey does this. Harvey keeps track of all the new construction and building that's going on. The other thing that I think the, the board might want to consider, perhaps next year, or at least look into it, is doing a census. Getting a better handle on, because what's happening now is not just new construction. We all see people, the oldies, moving out, no, I'm not. And, and then young families coming in with children. So you're, you're replacing children with people that have outgrown the district already, their children are out. And that you can find out more about by doing a census. Because those are students that are here and not just projected subdivisions. It's something you might want to think about. I think it's the only accurate way, because I know someone in, in our, a question, one of the board members in the past month or so has said, how can we get a handle on, on incoming students? And I think that's about the only way you really can. When will we know about kindergarten students? When do we get an idea of, of how many students are coming in this year?
So kindergarten registration is going. It's, I believe, completed at all three schools, and there's nighttime registration. So then we get a first look at it. But I can tell you that kids register from that date to the day before school starts. We usually have a big push, surprisingly, in August. I don't, I don't know why, but every single year we do. So I mean, we can share in short order what our projected numbers are, you know, based off the first round of registrations. Yep, absolutely, we can get that for you. But it, it continues from now until the end of the summer, and even into the beginning of the fall.
Okay. When it comes to class size, especially when you have an influx of children coming in, you discuss it as bubbles. When you, when you see, let's say, 50 or 40 elementary kids coming into a school district. The issue becomes, two of them might be in first grade, five of them might be in third grade, 10 of them might be in, you know, fifth grade. So it, cutting new sections, I, I know it's a difficult process. And, and again, I know every one of us at this table would like to keep class size low, who wouldn't? But it's, it's a matter of funding as well.
And with registration kind of being rolling, I mean, Robert will tell you, it, I'm literally crying at my computer emailing the principal saying, it's another first grader, I can't believe it, it's another first grader. Guess what, it's a first grader and a third grader, and now you're full of both. It, it drove us absolutely crazy, because there's no predicting it. Just, last year it was all second graders, just every other kiddo that moved in the district was a second grader. But as we move along, Megan brought up really good points, that we add supports as that happens. So we don't wait until end of the year and say, what, what should we, what should we do? We've been adding teaching assistants and utilizing some of our, pushing teachers to focus on some of the larger sizes. But it's just such a difficult decision. And then even post to one principal, like, look, we may be at the point where we may need to add a teacher, but you also have to have a conversation with your staff, because that means art on a cart. Or that means music comes to your classroom, because you're giving up one of those spaces. So it's just, nothing's easy, but it's ongoing conversations about how can we support our teachers and our students.
And that was another reason for talking about a census. Because in the future, it's not just about breaking a class or breaking a section. It might be by breaking a school, or adding a, adding to a school. Because it's going to happen. And if you don't look forward, you'll get caught short at the end and you will be on a cart. Nobody wants their kids on carts. So it's something to think about and plan, that's all I'm saying. It's, it's not today, and it's not tomorrow. But it's something to plan, just, just for, for really, for a good school district that people want to live in, quite frankly. The items that the board had brought up for tonight's discussion. I mean, I don't see, I see some really great things there, sound system, the marquee. But me personally, my personal feelings is, especially since Harvey explained about the buses, and so did Jim, that all of these come after children's actual needs. I, I know we like nice sound and everything, this is how I feel, my opinion. So anything we can spend money on for, for the children, for their developmental, their mental health and for their education, is where I would prioritize any kind of money we have. Something like a $250,000 expense for the auditorium. Perhaps that's something that, if we're going to get money back on, maybe, maybe a little windfall like from a solar farm, can go to something like that. And then you take your time, if it takes time getting back to you, I mean, if that's something you plan for in the future. I just think right now, with the, with the issues that we're facing with, with our kids today. And I think it was four out of 10 children across the United States are, have, they did a study that feel hopeless. And that's scary. So as far as, so that's how I feel about those. Support for IEPs in, in, we, we are going at, we have in the budget already, I want to clarify this. We already have in the budget, support for high school, for children taking regions. Because I know you've been working on that for a while. So that's not, to be, that's in there already.
That's, that's one of our prioritizing.
Yeah.
That's right, I just wanted to confirm that. Will that teacher be able to go from a regions to a, be able to be pushed in, in several different grade levels at the high school?
Yeah, it's based on their certification, but yes.
Well, is there possible to get somebody that's like dual-certified and do we, is that a possible thing to?
Yeah, I mean, we get, yeah, this, yep.
Okay. I, I think.
And Teresa, there's also a special ed teacher added at the elementary level.
Yeah, no, I, I, I saw that, I saw that. I don't think you can pick a child that's more needy. I think every, every child is needy, especially today. When, the first year I was on the board was COVID. We had all our meetings. And I remember when the state came down and announced this money. We all said, this is great, except how do we sustain it? And, and people are going to want us to sustain it, and we won't be able to. So I'm just glad to see this, this budget is so concentrated to me, as far as I'm concerned, on children. Like it better, sure, can we do it? I don't know where the money comes from. So, thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Teresa. Larry?
Observation first, and then a couple of questions. If Jim and Margaret want to give their lottery winnings to the district, just keep in mind, when the state put in their lottery, with the idea that it was going to fund schools, and they gave us the lottery money and then took away an equal amount. Don't give us anything if they're going to take it away, all right? Question, the calculus BC. Is it possible to take a look at that, and instead of saying, we're adding a teacher, because it's one class? Could we say that, ask for a volunteer teacher to teach a sixth class? And you may not know if it would fit into a schedule at this point, but to have the money set aside for that one class to do that?
So I wouldn't really ask for that. And the reason is, is because there's many moving parts behind this. As I had shared before in speaking with Joe and Brian. It's, it's a larger picture of auditing the current classes, and then auditing what the kids are asking for, plus what our staffing needs are. I wouldn't want to say a .6 could do it, and then that not be able to do it, if that makes sense. You know, like I said, if there's magic to be made, they're the ones that will make it happen. But we have to look at the other courses that might have to, even if, even if you offer a .6 for one person, it may move things. I just, I would, I would not feel comfortable saying a .6 could do it. It could, but if it can't, then I don't want to falsely promise that.
Okay. The communication specialist, I know that's not specifically student-oriented. But it's a burden on our sta, current staff. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to do it through BOCs. And do it, instead of a .6 where we would have to end up paying for benefits. Halftime, you know, .4, do it through BOCs and then possibly get aid on it.
The BOCs co-serv for that position runs approximately $30,000 to have a person one day for every week.
Okay.
Just as a point of reference.
And the aid offset would be?
It'd probably be somewhere around 70%, but you always get it the next year.
Okay, so the 30,000 would be 30,000 minus 70% the next year.
Right.
Okay, so if we, that, that would then kick in, so we'd have to bite the bullet the first year. But subsequent years, it would be 70% less than that. I'm just, you know, it, it just, I know the amount of work that goes into keeping up our communications. And, and one of the things that we're always being beat on for is lack of communication, whether it's true or perceived. It just seems to me that that would be a good way to, to, to look at it. The next question is, Terry, I was trying to follow your UPK. And right at the end, you said you think you could fill the 20 seats? If that's the case, I'm, I'm very much in favor of putting that into the budget. If we're talking about, our youngest kids need the most help. And then once they're helped at a young age, that follows through the rest of their career. It seems to me it's only logical that if a kid is in UPK, it's, it's a positive.
And I will say, this is anecdotal. There are students accessing pre-kindergarten right now that never would have accessed pre-kindergarten in Cornwall at these providers. Just Megan and I do the visits and looking at the kids in the class and talking to some families about how, how happy they are to be at one of our three providers is just, I know to Teresa's point, we don't like the word lottery. But there's also some benefit to having an equal access platform. That's, that's why UPK was put onto the floor was for that.
That's where I'm going with this.
I agree.
Those extra 20 seats would be another 20 kids, perhaps, that would benefit on a, on an early level. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Larry, now Lewis.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so there's a lot here, right? Everybody has asked some, some great questions. I have a brief question, Harvey, at the last page, you don't have to go to it, you don't have to go to it. Last page, additional Calc BC, 114. That column, the cost column, that's, that's inclusive of salary and benefits, right? That's what you typically do. Of these, of all, all the costs in these columns, what other ones, what other, what costs? What salaries or what additional costs are there? I know, I think Megan mentioned additional, the addition of the Calc BC math course would require certifications? Does that come out of cost as well, or, or do we have to get that certification every year?
So that would be, to get certified with the college, that would come out of the PD line, so that we would take care of that within there.
And then the differing amounts that you see, so you'll see a higher cost for the math teacher, inclusive of salary and benefits, conversed to the federally-funded teachers, you'll see a pretty big difference. A lot of that goes to experience and years of experience from a teacher. So we're assuming a Calc BC teacher would be higher in the years. Not a first-year teacher.
Yeah, right.
Teacher, so that's important for folks to.
Yeah, I did, I did notice the salary was, was a bit higher than, than others, as well as, you know, that first, you know, black letters and blue letters. Yeah, it's, it's important, everybody, a couple of people have mentioned it before. It's, it's very important about that concept of fiscal sustainability. You know, make sure we're not, you know, solving a problem today to cause a problem for tomorrow. So that's really all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Louis, now me. So I want to start just by, well, first thanking everybody, obviously with the administration, also the board. I think this has been a, a deep and necessary discussion. So one thing, it, it has come up and has been addressed, but I want to just centralize it. The, what impact this has directly on the tax cap, right? Because we want to make sure that whatever funding decisions we're making are relative to its impact on the community. So with everything that's in blue, that's really like a .8, a plus .8 tax cap. Because everything in blue plus 100,000 would be, would be 1%. So if we take off, if 500,000 is 1%, right? Then minus 100,000 is 400,000, that's going to come in at .8%, right? My, my numbers are pretty accurate there, okay? So essentially, we have, we do have some wiggle room, right? Like, yeah, we can fund what's in blue, and that's .8. We can include something, a couple of things, one thing that equals 108, and now we're at 1. Or we can go over that and dip it further into some of the black and push the tax cap. We can't go higher than 1.76. So there are some things that we, we could do, we just have to collectively make a decision if that's wise. All right, so that's the, those are the numbers, and that in principle is what we can do. Now it's what we should do. So I want to go back to those elementary school teachers, because I think that's where a lot of the, the conversation has been taking place. And it's certainly something that I've been thinking about a lot myself. So the early intervention teachers, I think Megan, Terry have made good arguments in, in favor of why those are blue. And then there's the one full-time elementary. Now, the, so those, those are four positions that we're, that are in black, that we'd essentially be losing, right? Because they're currently funded, federally funded, and we'd be losing them. I'm not asking you to come up with, you know, exactly the numbers, what impact that would have on class size. I'm assuming it wouldn't go down. So one of our, one of our issues that we've been talking about is class size, right? So immediately, I, I hope that I am able to make sense of my own, like, Beautiful Mind chalkboard here, which is probably not even, like, nearly that complex. But just running the numbers and what that would, if we funded all of those positions, what impact that would have? So first thing we have to do, and Megan, tell me if I'm wrong. We actually have to subtract 126, 140 from our num, our blue number, because that would be one of those positions that's in black, right?
No.
No.
Great.
So I just erased your chalkboard.
Okay, so go ahead, explain.
The one FTE elementary teacher is an addition. Right now, we currently have those four in our buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, and they're not, they don't, they're not in their own classroom decreasing class size, they're pushing in.
Yep.
So they create a smaller class size within the class size. So you might take 10 kids and I have another 13 with me.
So it's a different position?
That bottom one is a completely different position. That bottom one would allow us to have another classroom teacher to decrease class size.
Okay.
The other four would be still pushing, and then they pull out. But they're not having their own class to decrease class size.
Got it, okay. In some ways, that simplifies it, because my next question was going to be, would we have the class, would we have the size? the class, would we have the size in the, the classroom size?
No.
Just the numbers makes them not as appealing, but still I think doable. So if we, then if we funded all four of those positions, the ones that are in black, that would equal $397,000. You're going to have to trust me on that. That would be another point, that, that would essentially be, if we were to fund 100,000, let's say UPK or something that was in that list, right? Well, let me, let me backtrack, let me backtrack. Let's say we didn't fund UPK or anything else aside from these, aside from these four positions. We would have enough money for that because we're starting at .8 increase, right? So we have 100,000 to get us to a 1 increase. And then on top of that, to get us to a 176 increase, we have another 375,000. So really we have 475,000 on top of the blue.
If you wanted to go that.
If you want, that, I'm just saying what's possible. So if we, if, because again, this is all just about examining what our choices are. So if we said, all right, we want to, these are of utmost importance. We want to add, want to keep everything that we currently have. We don't want the federal money to dry up and then we lose, we lose a position. We only want to be in a position where we're adding. Okay? I can understand that argument. Then we would be adding, keeping everything in blue, adding those four would be, again, 100,000 to get us up to 1, and then there's 250, 270, 297 left on top of that, which would put us at an increase of about 1.6. Right? Which would leave .16 roughly if we wanted to go that, to, to the tax cap. Which is, what is that? $70,000? Something like that? Kind of, kind of matters actually though around the, the edges because UPK is about $70,000. Didn't expect that to be so round. Okay. So I just want to give everybody, part of that was just working through, but when we think about what our options are, I think it can become fatalistic like because what's in blue, what's in black, but we have the option to, to fund that. It's just, A, can we? And B, should we? I mean, will we, will that, will the community support that? Is that something that, you know, is worth that kind of risk? Let me ask, so in the, I know it's easiest to just say, you know, fund those four positions, which I'm sure everybody, if money was no issue, everybody here would say yes to. If we had to start splitting the baby a little bit, which analogy, which might be too close to home for this, is there a difference in need among those four positions? Or is it pretty much evenly distributed?
It's evenly distributed, yeah. There's two because of the larger size of CES.
Yeah, yeah. So in your view, Megan, hard to, you would almost look at it as like a, and I guess I'm putting you on your spot, on the spot for your personal opinion, but you would kind of look at it as like a package deal?
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if you're going to do it to fully get the impact equally across the three schools, that's, that's the way you do it.
And we've had those conversations, why would Willow get it and not C W?
Yeah, no, yeah, once you get down to it.
Why would CES? It's just, I can't have those conversations.
Yeah, your first reaction is like, I'll do two, but then what are you really saying? Yeah. Okay. So I think that those are my, my questions. So then, man, now, now that we, we talked through it, well, first of all, I know I'm partially talking to myself, but does everybody understand like what I'm saying? Because this, I think this is a...
It's the tax cap, so we can do that plus the...
Like we could go up to the tax cap. We could. I'm not saying we should. We could. And that's what that would, that's one combination of what it would get us. Now, I do think in the interest of like making an actual decision, because that would get us so close, if we funded those four and we funded UPK, man, that would get us to within like, like almost too close, like to just be able to ballpark it. We would have to know if that was possible because if we're 5,000 over, it doesn't work. Let me ask a, a follow-up question. To UPK, and Terry, you mentioned like if we, we can fund the 80, but we might not get to 80, what if we get to 75? What hap, it doesn't, we don't get any money back or do we?
We do. We would submit our application for whatever the board approves. So out of that 137 that we have from the state, we would just submit our application based on 60, 75, 80, whatever the board approved.
And is it, I mean, now that, I wasn't expecting to be, I'm sorry, I'm so in the weeds now. I wasn't expecting it to be this close on the numbers. Megan had to, you know, deliver truth on that one FT. Would it be possible, again, just possible if not advisable, to fund 78 UPK seats? If it was that close where you just couldn't make 80?
We could. It would be conversations with providers. We really want our own classroom. So Justin's speaking with providers for interests and things of that nature. There's one that would be interested in an expansion of 15 seats. One would be interested in expansion of a full classroom than one that isn't a current provider that would ask for a whole classroom of 20. So 15, 20, 20, but everything kind of works in, 15 is kind of anomaly. I think it's more probably because of the actual space. But everything that we've seen has been in the 18 to 20 range. 18 is important because you go down by one staff member, you need a teacher and a TA. Once you go to 20, you need a teacher and two assistants. So that's where some go from 18 to 20, but most support the 20 students model.
So, so 75 would be a feasible option?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay. Bass, you had a question?
Yeah, I, my question is about the procedure, kind of, I mean, the question is going to be, do you approve this budget? Do you not approve this budget? So what I'm seeing is, and my first question was, what are the criteria behind going blue versus black? I believe we're nine people here. We don't all share the same kind of support towards what's in blue, like this specific item, that should be black, for instance, or a black should be blue, right? So my question is, how are we going to do that?
Yeah.
Because like, you know, listening to everybody, I was like playing with numbers and I have, for instance, a suggestion removing one blue, putting two blacks instead of it, right? Because the math kind of is not that far, kind of, I mean, it's close enough. And my conviction behind those, like those two blacks should be blue, right? So how are you going to do that?
Yeah. So I've been thinking about this as, as we go as well. My initial thought was that I would go up to the whiteboard and just ask, what do you want to add, right? Now I feel bad for, for Terry. He went and found this whiteboard and I might, I might not even use it. I might use it later in a more ceremonial purpose. So what I'm thinking is, because to this exact point, Bass, it's not as simple as just putting a tally next to things, right? There might be things you say, actually, I want to move from, from this and it just as I'm visualizing what that whiteboard would look like, I don't think it would make any sense. I don't think it would help. So what I'm going to suggest now is we go around, and I, I will start it off since I'm at the end of my thing and I'll just kind of, what I think is the, a way to structure it, like just what your package looks like. That sounded awful. We'll edit that out later, I'm sure. YouTube, that didn't happen. Hold on, everybody's got to pause. Give a second. Clip here and we keep going. That's how it works. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to tell you what my ideal funding scenario looks like. And then we go around, I, I think though we have to limit it to that. We can't, if, if you just have an idea, Terry, laugh it out. Laugh it out. Terry's, Terry resigned effective immediately. We go around and just tell me like, you know, I, I would fund this or that.
It, it might be a little bit chaotic. I mean, literally a black board, whiteboard, whatever the color is, should be nice.
I mean, to keep track of it, but yeah, I, I, that's, that's a good idea. I'll do that and just give what everybody's scenario is, but it won't be, I'll get up and I'll, I'll do it and then, but we, we won't do like a tally of like, I'll just write down in, in a brief description what, what your, you know, everyone says. Yeah, and it might, to that point, it might craft itself, yeah.
It might be helpful if, if we see if there's consensus on any item.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think...
And, and then you can start working towards consensus on, on whatever other combinations might be out there. I, I, otherwise...
Okay. So go, let's do this and let's do this. Let's go around very quickly and I, again, we, we just cannot afford to turn this into a discussion item. This is literally a, list the things that you, that are most important to you and then we can go around and put together combinations of what that would look like. Does that make sense? And it's what you just said to me, John.
I was just saying, why don't we just say what we agree with Terry with or Terry on, right? So, and, and what we would add, it may not be all the blue, right?
What are your proposed changes?
Okay, okay. All right, listen, listen. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'll start it off what I think is most helpful.
I can tell you what I'm proposing.
Let me, let me start off, let me start off. So I would be in support of all the blue. I would be in support of adding the four positions in black at the elementary school. And with every cent that's left over till the tax cap, UPK. If that's 75, that's 80, whatever it is. Now, usually I am very hesitant to go to the tax cap, but I think this is a year we are losing funds. I don't want to see kids go backwards and I don't want to see class sizes go up. So that is why in this case I'm, I want to do whatever we can and then put it on us to tell the public why a 1.76 increase in the budget is worth it. That's my position. Lewis, do you want to go?
Yeah, I can. So I, I also am in support of all the blue. And then as a general note, doing what we can do to support that early intervention concept as well as all our special needs communities. Yeah, I don't want to soapbox it, but I, I am not, I am not for pushing towards the tax cap as, as a general, general notion. That's kind of where I'm at.
So wait, you're at, you're in favor of no additions?
As is.
At only blue?
I'm in favor of, oh, yeah, only blue and, and doing our best to keep in that, keeping that at the 1% increase.
Well, that, to be clear, only blue is a .8. So you would still have 100,000 to spend to get to 100, to get to 1%.
You're pushing me?
I am. I am.
I mean, which, which is not important. You mean, you tell me which one of these, which one of the blacks?
I already went.
Yeah, I know. You tell me which one of the blacks are not important.
Your turn now.
I mean, what resonated with me is, is the social worker end.
All right. So the social worker is, you're talking about the high school social workers, that's 131. So you're over. You cannot go that. It is. You guys don't watch enough daytime television, I guess. Yeah, that's, that's too much.
Okay.
Oh, well, well, too much if you want to hold yourself to one.
Then 1%.
But if you wanted to do that and that would put us at 1, 1, 1, 2, I don't know, you can do that.
I'll leave it there.
All right. So blue plus high school social worker. All right. Let's, let's just retrace our steps. Larry, you go.
All right. Well, it's interesting. Last night I went through all of these and it turns out I support the blue. It's how, how I worked out also, except for one or two little things. I would also like to see UPK.
Okay.
And I would also like us not to go above the 1%. We were talking about sustainability. Those four positions that we were talking about were put in as a reflection to, to address some of the issues of COVID. That means next year we would have to cut them. So at some point we have to look at those positions as they were in there for a specific purpose and is that purpose over? So just as a...
Okay, Teresa?
I agree with that theory, Larry. I just don't think it's over.
Your mic, Teresa.
I agree with the theory. I just don't think it's over yet and that's my concern. I agree with Brendan. I don't want to go any higher than 1%, but, but caveat is I think we need those additional people for our kids. So what you suggested with the black and the blue and the, you know...
So you go, my suggestion was go up to the 1.76?
Yes, yes. That's, I'm agreeing. And, you know, it's, it's basically what it comes down to is parents and, and we are, we're all sitting here, our staff, we all see this learning loss. We all see this, these children that are depressed, that have emotional problems. Well, it costs money to do something and if the parents want this, they have to vote for it. And, and that tells us if we're, if we're right. I feel it's the right thing. I think the kids need it.
So to be clear, so you're...
I'm, I'm...
What I said, so the blue plus the four elementary schools.
I like, I like your packet, okay?
That was a misquote, but I will accept that.
I, I know it was a misquote.
Thank you. And let the record show, that's what I said.
I purposely...
And, and UPK.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Jim?
Yeah, I, you know, it's really, this is really just an extremely difficult challenge in front of us. You know, ideally we'd have an unlimited pool of money, but we don't. And we really need to, you know, I said it at the last meeting, I said it's all about balance and balancing what we think our students need versus what the taxpayer needs or what the taxpayer can support, you know? I, I'm not in favor of going up to the tax cap and I know, you know, I cited before some of the increases that are out of control, out of our control, the BOSEs issue and the, and the transportation. But we have to remember with all the state funding, you know, we have to think not just in percentages, but in real dollars. And this budget is a big increase in real dollars from previous years. And last year's was, you know, a really big increase in real dollars. So the percentages, you know, it's just more actual money. And we really need to make sure that if we say we're going to hire all these teachers that we, we are confident supporting that. So what I might suggest, and I'm just going to throw this out here and I'm, you know, maybe for the administration too, I'm in favor, Brendan, I, I like classroom teachers. That's what I personally value. So potentially trading those four, three to four level teachers for the elementary and middle school counselors, but I would let the administration rebut that, you know, I don't know. It's almost impossible for us to say what's the need there. I guess the administration's already answered that because they have that in blue, but I'd just throw that out there as a suggestion. So I guess I, my thought process would be to stick with what the administration has, has recommended. I feel we're sort of at that right balance of providing those early interventions in the classroom. And, and, you know, keeping this a sustainable, long-term budget.
So Jim, let me just make sure I understand. So...
I need it.
No, no, that's good. You're good, you're good. So you're, you're interested in seeing a trade for early intervention teachers in blue for, you said middle school counselor? Just want to be sure.
Taking, I'm trading right now in blue. We have an elementary counselor and a middle school counselor. And if you total those two...
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. So you're, you want to trade the blue counselors for the four push-in elementary school teachers?
I'm throwing it out, I'm, I said I'm throwing that out there for discussion. I said ultimately the administration is the one in there every day living with... the administration is the one in there every day, living with that, and they chose to put that in blue. Those two positions are 285,000, and the four, three to four, early innovations are, are early pushing are 397. So I guess I would go up 100,000 rather than 400,000.
Which would put you at 1% if you didn't fund anything else.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's a, but ultimately, I guess, I, I'm saying I support, I support blue and black as they are.
With that one caveat.
With that caveat of potentially, that's a way of discussing.
So, to, okay, makes sense. So UPK, a no for, for this year, is what you're saying, for the extra 20?
I'm going to say no for now, only, you know, Terry's concerned of, are we going to fill those seats if we get to 20? It sounded like probably, but not necessarily. I, I heard some concern there. I think we just need to, we're just in a bad position with the state on that, and I think we need to really nail that down before we expand those, those seats.
Yep, okay, got it. So you are blue, but trade the two counselor positions, one middle school, one elementary school currently in blue, for the four black ES, ES elementary school pushing teachers?
I'm blue.
Man, that was not, I was thinking for yes.
That was a proposal-
Got it, okay, got it. So your position is blue, you want to explore that, understood.
I don't even, I, I'm throwing it out there-
You're, you're arguing against yourself now.
If somebody else wants to explore it, I'm throwing it out there as a concept, potentially to be explored.
Yep, okay, cool. Alright, so Margaret.
So, I'm definitely in favor of blue. I really believe that, you know, social, emotional needs are paramount, especially in this post-pandemic world. And, you know, you can, no matter how much you throw at kids, if their mind is not ready to accept that information, it doesn't matter how much you're throwing at them. Like, they need to be in a space to be able to absorb and to learn. So, with that said, I'm 100% blue. Normally, I would say no to raising the tax cap, and that's what I've always said in the past. However, again, post-pandemic, and the fact that to have as much support as we can have for these kids, I would also add the four, the four positions that were federally funded, so the elementary school, the third and fourth grade positions. I would add that, and as much as I would like to say, UPK, it's not like it's going away, right? So it's just a matter of getting more seats at this point, and I think over time, we might be able to do that, and really kind of align those a little bit more. So I would say yes to the four additional positions, but no to the UPK additional seats at this point.
Got it, interesting comment.
So I'm almost like you, but not quite. I gotta be my own person, you know?
Yes. I would recommend that. So, that would be like a 1.2, no.
Yeah, you do the math.
No, that's like a 1.5, yeah.
I'll take it.
1.5, okay. Alright, Richard.
Alright. This is like, so difficult for the first-
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, my first budget season here. Yeah, right into the deep end, okay. So I support all the blue. I think these are important. And, while I understand that we have to be very mindful of our, the taxpayers, and we have to be as fiscally responsible as possible, I also understand that we have a lot of needs, and I'm here to represent everyone, but we have to keep our students in mind, and I think early intervention is so important. So I support these four positions in black. I think most people here said that. I think we've had enough people come to us from the community advocating for different needs and sharing their thoughts with us. So I feel confident in putting my support behind those four positions. UPK, I'd be in support of the 20 additional seats as well. I think that's, they're our students too. They're part of the community, and we just have to figure out how to do it, and I'm confident that we'll get those 20 seats filled, if we can figure that out, because I, I really feel that it's important to, to, again, bring early intervention and allow these, these kids to I guess, get the, get the help and recover from the learning loss that I think everywhere has experienced it. In New York, in the country, we've had it here in Cornwall, so that's why I support those items.
Good. And that fills it. So, blue plus black elementary school positions, and then UPK, alright, very good. John?
So, yeah, UPK, I am in favor of. I, I understand we have resource constraint there in terms of providers and the seats that might be available, could be available. I think we should pursue maximizing whatever that, that amount is. At least have it offered, and to the degree people make the choice to opt out, that's their choice, but I, I think we should try to maximize the usage of that up to the state level, and so I'm in favor of adding that. And I don't want to reframe things. We've framed this in a way that it's like what we see before us. But from my perspective, learning loss may or may not be addressed by those four positions that are in black. I'm more focused on the learning loss. And maybe there's other ways that we could go about solving the learning loss with, I don't know, after-school programs, but I understand that in-school programs are probably the best in terms of addressing that. Which then causes me to think that, you know, maybe it being black, making it blue would be appropriate. The challenge there, though, I understand the argument about, you know, it's a temporary phenomenon, right? Once you get it up to speed, what do you do then? Then it seems that you'd be shrinking. I, I think that's, that type of accordion is not good for, for the district, it's not good for the people that we hire. It's, it's, we should try to avoid that at all costs. So I'm a little bit torn in how this has been framed. And so, let me just say that in terms of supporting what's in blue, I do. I wish there could be more blue. But what, there is, I think there is some good thought that went behind those recommendations, so I support them. In terms of the, again, the push-in help at the elementary school level, the learning loss is not only at elementary school, it's also at the middle school, and I don't think that will address the issue that really is on the top of my mind, which is the learning loss that exists, you know, from these assessments, these scorecards that we have seen, three through eight. So, barring a solution to that problem, I would be reticent to agree with adding these four positions because they don't address the other, what is it, five, six, seven, eight? Five or four classes that we know are engaged in, in learning loss. Now, if that were to be reframed and say, you know, these push-in teachers will exist to include five through eight, if that was the understanding, where the need is, I, I would be in favor of adding it, but I think we're discriminating against the kids that are moving forward.
That's a load of words. I, I mean, I've obviously used words I shouldn't have tonight, but I discriminate, John, I mean, it's not-
Uh, well, I, you know, it, I'm sorry you don't like my language. I think it's fair to characterize allocating resources to some kids, but not all kids, a form of, you know, choice, of discrimination. Now, you know, I, I know that could be a charged word in various contexts, we're not talking race. Well, we're talking about need.
I understand, I understand.
And the need is, and let me clarify that need. The need is learning loss. And the loss that occurred at certain levels within this district through the pandemic was, was quite severe at the, at the middle school level, not at the early-on level. So until we find a solution to address that, it's kind of hard for me to, to say yes to the, to the black and making it blue. I, I, I'd hope that the administrators would go back and try to solve that problem before we get to the, to the actual budget. So at that point, I would just say, I'm in favor of raising the current level by my ad of, what, $80,000, that takes it up to 1%? I would be in favor of expanding the tax cap.
Well, we would reach the tax cap.
But the, the amount on the taxpayer from 1% to another number. Just not the way it's listed here, because I think it excludes kids that probably need it.
Okay, so I got you down for blue plus UPK, plus hypothetically, push-in support at the middle school to fill out the delta between that, which would be about $370,000.
Wherever the need is within the K through eight spectrum.
Okay. Alright, so I got you down for a hard blue and UPK. And, I mean, that's all we can say, that's all we can peg to numbers. So, for now, we'll, we'll keep it there. Alright, pass.
Okay, thanks Brendan. First, you know, those four FTE, third, fourth grade teachers currently federally funded. And that's because of the COVID needs. I'm going to believe that, and now that we are post-COVID, this is behind us, this means those four FTEs are no longer needed. I mean, they were kind of identified as a COVID need. We're not in COVID anymore. It's behind us. A lot of mistakes done, whatever, that's different conversation. But we don't need those four FTEs anymore. That being said, I'm for no tax increase, not even a dime, okay? These are not, not the best times to increase taxes. I can tell you all the expenses, you know, food, gas, you name it, 25 to 50% increase. How much our salaries went up? 4% myself, okay? The rest is just like managing to go. So I'm against any tax increase. So, with that in mind, during the whole conversation, I was like multitasking, listening to what I'm hearing and doing some math, crunching numbers. I identified two black items as, shouldn't be black, should be blue. One of them is the addition of the calculus PC math course, okay? That should have been blue, it was marked blacked. I still remember the student who came here and talked about, I mean, argued for that need. I was so impressed, forgot the name of that student, I'd like to know his name. I mean, the way he defended it, the, the way kind of, I mean, and, and the research he's done, maybe with the group behind him. But the way he presented all the numbers, kind of, I mean, it's hard to argue against that. We need that. We just heard, I think, Megan, who said, we don't, we can train kind of some existing math professors to take that role, but we're not going to go that. So this one full-time BC course would need, that would be 114, I talked about math, right? 114,000. Now, the monitors five, I'm assuming that would be one monitor per school, I believe. How, how, why five? All in middle? All in middle, okay. So that's, that's okay, that's great. If we go down from five to two, and I think Richard asked you, Terry, discussion said, yeah, we can, if we play with numbers, we can do two. I mean, I'm not going to say one. Two, maybe right side of the building, left side of the building, meet in the middle, then go back. That would be 32,000. 114 plus 32, that would be 146. Okay, how, remember, I said no tax increase. From the blue, I went through them one time, second time, third time, fourth time. From the blue only, the only item I would take out to compensate, right, I'm gonna come as close as possible, would be the full, the FTE English as a new language teacher.
What's the total on that?
That's 126.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you have 146 minus 126, we have to come up with only $20,000?
No, you need to come up with $420,000, because the blue already have a $400,000 increase to it, and if you're sticking to your 0% tax increase, you need to get 400,000 out of your blue.
No, I mean, I'll take out the 123-
I know, I know.
Put instead 146.
I know.
So you have to give me 20,000.
Right, it was 420,000 now. So, the, just the blue is a 400,000, is an 800, is a .8% increase. So that's a $400,000 increase.
That, that's fine. I mean, I'm talking about the 1,200, right? That's the total.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can go at a different angles. I'm saying, I'm trying to let you know what the path-
You're going back to my statement about tax increase.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, if you wanted to hit that-
I'm gonna, I'm not going to increase it anymore. I mean, that's what I said, maybe I'm just like-
I mean, are you increase, that's my question, I'm a little confused.
Got it, got it, okay. So, so you don't want to, can I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
So you, you don't want to, you don't, you don't want to increase it beyond the blue?
Beyond, yeah.
But just to, just to clarify, it is a .8% tax increase.
Yeah, I mean, that's like, right away to it, right? I've said like, I'm not going to go by one dime above what-
What's been recorded, got it.
What's the blue. But again, unfortunately, it's going only 20,000 above, and I believe the difference here, the 108, that Harvey said like, we can, it's up to us to play with it. I'll, I'll borrow like two, 20,000 out of that 108. I mean, my goal would be like zero tax increase, but-
Our rollover is, our rollover is more-
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's possible.
There's the way to zero, unless you go back.
Okay, so-
Brendan?
Sorry, go ahead, Larry.
Just thinking about what John had, had said about the four positions. One of the things that happened to, and I'm, I'm assuming it was an accident, left off of the sheet of the things that aren't being funded, was the tutorials three through eight at 155,923. If that were put in the blue and the four positions weren't in, would that be a, a way to address your concern from, because that'd be a three through eight?
Sorry, Larry, we're-
Can you just restate that again?
Where did the tutorials, is that from a previous meeting?
That's, yeah, that goes back, you go back to our original, way back when, back in, what was it, February?
I'm just trying to figure out how far back in my binder I got to go.
That was, that was back when it was, it was listed as one of the possibilities, was the tutorials three, eight. That was back in-
It was the 27th.
That was the first, was that the first one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you really able to keep track of this, Brendan? Amazing. Amazing. I'm serious, amazing.
Hey, Jim?
Well, I-
It's on that page.
I was told by Brendan to go over this list, you know?
One, two, three. So, so Larry, to, to your question, yes. And I was trying to allocate, how, how many hours does that buy you?
Right.
And, and the quick math that I came up with was, where is it? It was just, I think, under 162. Oh, no, correction, 1,800 hours.
Okay.
Right? And then you say to yourself, well, we have like 1,000 kids, but how many of those kids do you really think are going to need that extra work, right?
If it's three, eight, it's more than 1,000 kids.
What's that?
If it's three through eight-
Correct.
It's more than 1,000 kids.
Right, it's probably closer to, what, 1,400, I would think.
But of, of those 1,400, not all of them would need it.
I would say 10%, I, I, 30%, I, so, so I think, I think there's, there's some, something to be done there.
Alright.
Thank you.
And just to respectfully interject, I just want to remind everyone that this budget was built on the needs assessment from all the building principals and directors and so on. So what's in the blue is what what became for today to, you know, break down some of the money. But if you go to the middle school, that's what the requests were. There was not requests for additional staffing. Not to say, let's look at tutoring, that's great. But I just want to remind everyone that this budget is built on a collaborative effort of all the administrators. And that, what you see here is the original in black and blue is what was thought upon to be included. So additional staffing for that wasn't part of it. Just as a reminder.
Do you hear me? Yeah. Okay, so it's more straightforward than perhaps you would think. There were all nine of us agreed with all the blue. Four of us said elementary school push-in. Five said UPK. So you see your majority taking shape. The only majority combinations were for the blue and UPK. That's right. Yeah, no, okay. So so there's, that's a good point. So there's eight true.
True blue.
True, I'm, yeah. I'm self-editing a lot now. Eight. I'd say eight. Hard, hard support on blue with one, I don't know, blue, blue minus.
ENL.
Yeah, minus the ENL.
You don't get a check back on it.
That's, you get a minus is, you don't get all the perks. Okay. So then the question, all right, and then Louis said the high school social worker, Bass mentioned, these would be the replacement calculus BC, two monitors for the ENL. So that's really where we are. I think the the majority, unless anybody wants to change their their vote unofficially, the blue plus UPK gets support. Right? That has majority support. The question is, I mean, I I ask because the elementary school is so, the the push-ins are so close, it has four. That, again, that's a $375,000 addition. If that doesn't have majority, with the blue plus UPK, we are still under a 1% increase by like $30,000. Right, Harvey? So then the question is, do we want to find something for 30,000? Do we want to find something and go a little bit over the 1%? Or do we want to just stick it at blue plus UPK and have an increase of 0.97% or whatever that is? And that's the choice.
I would be in favor of that.
What I, the, just coming in, just the two, and don't, don't try to fill out the 1%?
Absolutely.
Hey Larry.
And it looks like we're finding things that we, you know.
Don't need to.
That we don't need to.
Hey Larry, would you, would you agree that the three through eight tutorial is something we do need? And that taking it to increase it, to cover that need, is an efficient use of funds? And so if that takes us up to 1.2%?
What was the total on that? What was the?
It's 155, which if if we pay people $65 an hour, that's 2,384 hours of. There's benefits on tutorial?
It's compensation. So that 68 goes up to about 82.
Okay, so take off.
Was that an original request by the building?
It's the needs assessment.
No, that's what I'm asking. Was it part of their, their response in the needs assessment?
Yeah, let me, I think it warrants clarification here. The only reason it was on there was because it was as per what the governor proposal was. It wasn't anywhere within the district. It was a placeholder, should it actually go through.
Okay, so that wasn't requested by the.
No.
By the middle school staff?
Okay, so so just to be clear, we're saying as a district, we don't need small group individual tutorials.
We're not saying that at all. They're making it sound like we are. I'm just saying a little clarification on who requested.
Your mic.
Is your mic on? I think. What Megan just said was very important, that, you know, there is a process here. Obviously, taking into consideration what our staff needs and thinks is a priority because we don't have endless deep pockets. So if that was, if that was something that they put on a needs assessment, that would be totally different. I have to think to myself that I have to have faith in our staff because I respect their opinion. And if they thought there was something more important than than I think that's what it is, just like with the monitors, if they asked for five monitors, I'd have to believe that they want five monitors because they know where they want to put them and at what times, not be, not because they don't want to spend it somewhere else. So no, I I just am going with what the staff wants. I'm, I'm not making a determination on that. I wanted to clarify what Megan said, that that's not what they asked for. That's all.
Just making the the full impact clear. So that would be if we went with the blue, I didn't do that right. Whatever. Yeah, whatever. I was like writing, thank you Bass. I was like writing it, doesn't make sense. Anyway, you can see why, how confusing it is when you look down at your notebook and that's what's on there. Okay, so with the blue and the UPK, again, the only combination that has consensus, we would be coming in at 0.96 roughly. Harvey can correct that for next meeting, but it would be just under a 1% increase to the tax levy. And I should, now that I'm realizing that people are gonna like record it, that is, those are unofficial numbers. Those have not been vetted clearly. But that that's before us. So I think unless anybody has, I mean, we could, we could go around again, but we we've done this exercise. And I think this is, unless anybody at, who has a, is on the fence about the elementary school positions, wants to change their vote, that's the only thing that would change the majority. So I think that we essentially have our consensus position. Again, unless somebody has something that would change that, at some point, we're gonna have to stop this discussion. I think that's the most logical place to do it.
If if anybody want to discuss anything that you did not circle, I mean, you know, like even if you have to say something negative about it, let's just go ahead and do it.
Or you have, you have the the four single outliers.
Right. If you wanted to add.
Anybody with the four outliers.
True.
Was motivated otherwise to to bolster other numbers, you know, to, or support them.
Well, I, what I also want to be clear though, as we look at this, it's not now just a co, a a choice between those outliers. It is a choice between those outliers and everything else on the list. So I I don't want to put a false choice in front of everybody as if to say these have risen to the top somehow. I think you have to make a decision. Personally, I, I don't want to start, you know, playing favorites on things that were not on my initial list. I think that's, that's only fair. So I'm, I'm willing to go with the things that I supported that survived the board gauntlet and are now consensus and stop it there. Otherwise, I think it just becomes an extremely complicated argument and difficult to point back to your initial North Star. So.
Brendan.
Yes.
I had originally requested the calculus BC, but I do understand what Megan was saying. And I I accept the explanation. I, I, I'm not pushing for it. No.
Just to keep us going later Larry, I'd love to see calculus BC in the district. I understand your. Margaret didn't have her mic on, but the words that she put in my mouth were now's not the time. We have to go through the process. I would, I think many here on the board would like to see it be involved in the process next year. It seems to be that there's, you know, more people asking for it than potentially in the past. And the answer may still be no, but like to see it involved in the process for next year.
Got it.
I think we should vote on blue plus UPK Brendan, unless anybody wants to speak now and forever hold their peace in the age of heart. So, so that's, I appreciate the segue Jim. So so it seems to me that, you know, I could, I could say, hey, I'll switch and and go for the push-in for the elementary schools. But the conservative financier in me says, if I can solve the problem that exists, and it does exist, and the data shows it, and I'll be happy to share that data because I went through the New York State store card, and I was kind of surprised, actually. But anyhow, if we could solve that problem for $155,000, which adds about 1,800 hours of tutorials to those kids who need it, to Harvey using your $85 an hour adjustment, get it? Not 2,300, but about 1,800. It seems that's a cheaper response to our need than adding $400,000 to the budget this year that may go away in future years because we don't necessarily think we're gonna need it in years to come. Right? So I understand we want to be scalable. And I think the easiest way and most efficient from a financial perspective is to be scalable by using tutorial dollars to address that current need to get our kids up to where we were pre-pandemic. And that's my position.
Got it. My, my position on on this is, I appreciate everything you said, and I imagine it would have some impact. I think that anything, any additional programming in a school or continuing existing program has an impact. I am personally not comfortable with surfacing a a need at the board level that has not come up, percolated through the system. Right? And it's not as, from what I understand, it's, it hasn't, it's not that it got to a point and then was, you know, it didn't make the the cutoff, it just wasn't in the pool of recommendations. So for that reason, because then then I open myself up to, well, what are, what are some other, I don't, I don't want it to come down to my ideas personally for, you know, what would have an impact. Because I I just don't really know. That's not where my expertise lies. That's my position.
And and I apologize for bringing it up because I did not realize this was not something that was requested. I I thought that that was a requested list.
You're forgiven.
So to that point, I think this was probably a top-down driven issue from the state. It identified Cornwall as one of 425 districts that, as I understand it at that meeting, if I can recount, was identified as as subpart performance over the the pandemic using scorecard.
That's not true.
And.
It's not, it's not true. We weren't labeled anything.
We weren't identified.
No. It was a set aside for high-impact tutoring period. That's, that's what.
Mandated for only 400 odd school districts of the 700 odd school districts in the state.
I'm, I'm, I just spoke, I just spoke with Kate just to kind of double down on what Megan and I said. When you talk about after school and things of that nature, we just know what we're talking about, that you have to do things during the hours that you have kids in front of you. That's your guarantee. Relying on parents to be able to keep their kids after school, provide transportation, even though we provide transportation, getting them to stay after school after a long day, doing a lot of subjects that they may not prefer, and then you're gonna ask them to stay after for more math or reading.
Yeah.
It's not a guarantee. So we're just saying, all this top-down things, all we're relying on is what we know as educators. I asked Kate again, do, would we be in support of all these additional hours? And she said, no.
Okay.
But Megan and I said the same thing.
Okay.
It's just what we're saying.
That's fair. I I know Willow had a 95% participation rate based on our visitation thing. They seem to have cracked the code on how to make it available and have kids participate. I I'm not gonna say that, you know, they're doing something that other school districts or other buildings are not doing, but it seems that they've cracked the code. If that's the case, then I would like to change my position and say that I would support a push-in then. Because this, we need to address this issue. And if we're not gonna do it in a cheap way, well, then we're gonna have to do it in a more expensive way. And I changed my position, which excluded push-in, to now support it.
Got it. Okay, so we are now at, to be clear, I'm not gonna get up and change it. We are at a consent eight for blue, five for the elementary school push-in, and five for UPK. To be clear, that pushes us, sorry? Yeah.
Start yelling like I was brought up in the Bronx. At this point, how, how strongly, Margaret, don't sit down. You, don't sit down yet. How strongly does everyone feel about keeping, keeping it at 1%? I'm serious. I I, I mean, I I can be thick about things sometimes and say to myself, well, these are parents, I, I'm a grandmother, so everyone has vested interest in their children in school. I would hope they'd go out and support this. I will. But do you think that the difference will make a difference in people voting? Everybody knows, okay. Margaret, put four back on.
It's a different four.
It's a different four.
Right, that's right. Okay. Well, that was.
I, no, I don't.
Glad to know where exactly where we started.
I haven't lived in.
I understand. No, I, and I understand the.
I haven't lived in Cornwall.
The concern.
More than six years. Monroe Woodbury, it would have been different. They, but they were so killed half the time anyway. But I, if it's going to make a difference in getting a budget approved, and you feel confident, I know you've lived here longer than me, then fine. I don't, I don't want to do something that jeopardizes the whole, the whole process.
Understood. And then it all goes away.
That's it.
Okay. So we now, thank you Margaret, and thank you Bass.
Thank you, Margaret.
So we are back again to blue and UPK. I think, let's just go around and, blue PK writes itself. All right, so Bass, a yay or nay, it's not an official vote for the budget, but yay or nay on blue plus, supporting that being the, let's just say, the the outline of the final proposal?
Yeah, I believe we don't have to be 9-0. I mean, I'm, I'll stick to what I suggested. So I'd say no.
Okay. John?
No.
Richard?
No.
Margaret?
Yes.
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 Okay. So that is, it would be, the consensus is for everything in blue plus UPK. All right. That brings us to our final recognition of visitors. I would just, before I get there, I'm sorry. So next meeting is not two weeks from now, it is next Thursday, so 10 days from tonight. And that is when we will vote to adopt the budget, which will reflect the conversation that we had tonight, which would be the, all the elements in blue plus UPK. So just be prepared for that. That will be our our next and final point to touch this budget. And again, our goal tonight was to get to exactly where we are. And then it will be on the docket as an official resolution upon which we will be voting that night.
We have to craft a policy about remote.
Yes, okay.
So I just want that in the notes for Linda, so she knows that'll be part of our discussion is adopting a policy.
Got it. Okay. So just closing this budget presentation, we will now move to recognition of visitors. So anyone wishing to speak, please identify yourself in the microphone, limit your comments to three minutes, and you can leave your contact information at the desk if you wish. Thank you.
I'll be real short.
I'll be real short and sweet. One of my students now has to watch this three and a half hour meeting tomorrow after the chaos he's caused. Couple questions, is last year, the high school added AP Psychology, APE Environmental Science, SUNY Classism, Racism, Sexism. The discussion never got to the board level. I think, I'm looking forward to working with Joe, Brian, Mike and Steve at the high school. I think we can add Calc PC for $0. I'm looking forward to working with them on that. Thank you guys for engaging in that discussion today, but I, I think we can do it for zero. So I hope that we can turn around and do that. I think it's also important that we look back at the December 20th, 2021 Board Docs Personnel actions because a bunch of positions were created. And I've had a hard time following what positions of those are gonna be continued because we've been calling it a rollover budget, but those positions were in last year's budget. And I think a correct phrase would have been a rollover minus the federally funded positions. Because it looks like a lot of positions got created tonight, but I don't think any personnel would actually be hired. I could be mistaken that maybe one person would be hired. But I think it's important to look at what positions need to be eliminated through retirements. There are many that are going to be, have to be eliminated through retirements. I think someone could be possibly losing their job after this. So maybe before you have a discussion on the vote next week is that, hey, can we save a job? I think it's important that, I'm not gonna publicly say what position it is. You can reach out to me if you want to know, but I think it's an important position that maybe you guys could consider before next week. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, Jim? Motion carried.
Jim did not abstain.